Select Board's meeting, February 4th, 2020. In attendance, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moguln, Mr. Dede, Mr. Steinhardt, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. The first thing we have when we convene is in open session is public comments. Anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be your opportunity to do that. If you're going to make a statement, I'd ask you, please stand, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here at this time? All right, then we're going to go right in. We're going to be meeting with the Fire Chief in five minutes, so I'm going to try to take care of a couple of quick things before we go to the Fire Chief. Like to acknowledge payroll warrant number 2016 dated 2/3/20 in amount of $221,052.71. Need a motion to accept regular session minutes of 1/28/20.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Do we have any executive session minutes for 1/28/20?
Yes, we do.
Motion accepted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, pass them back. All right. Russ, come on up, please. And we thank you for coming tonight, Chief Anderson.
Last week kind of got shot quickly.
Right. So, yes, yes, we do appreciate you making a return trip so we can go over some preliminary budget information.
Your mail hold under section for appointment.
So, you have fire and EMS. I'm just going to give you a fresh fire one. Let's just clean up a little bit with some things that Melinda caught on me that I was a little redundant on. The EMS portion of what you got is still good, but this will be the first. So basically, you just want a quick overview, highlights.
Yeah, big stuff.
Increases.
Anything big, anything.
So, basically, as you go through, you'll see the yellow is the, under the, everything was, so the level funded, it was projected, and then this is the request version. First item is increasing administrative hours. Right now, we carry about $3,500 for that. That helped out while I was out. That's what we basically landed on. And I look to increase that to cover someone roughly 15 hours, give or take, to assist with payables and payroll and doing spilling and some of the other things that are going on within the department. There's a lot of running around with that, conference with Laura and others, and back and forth when you're doing pays and bills and payables and payroll, et cetera, et cetera. Well, I have to mark off a day, day and a half, just to do, deal with that stuff every week. I should be developing policies and other things that are a little bit more global, I think, related to the department. On radio maintenance, increasing that from $10,000 to $10,000 from $4,000. We've had issues with our remote sites. I know the police have been dealing with them the last couple of weeks as well. We're looking at moving some antennas and things to try to put some Band-Aids on the existing system until we figure out what we're doing for the bigger system. So that's the question, to increase that as well. Due, slight increase due to anticipated more people being part of mutual aid groups, ambulance groups, fire groups on this side. Supplies, increase of $1,000, just replacing outdated items. Some of the stuff on the trucks is getting worn, whole host of stuff. Computer support, $1,000, increase from, I think it's $2,000 now, increased to $3,000. I don't know if we'll be able to pull this off now or not. I know, so right now, we have software that takes from the police, from the dispatch CAD system and sends it to our software, so it backfills into our fire reports. We keep having continual problems with that. And I know we're in the process, I think we've got approval for them, right? Paul and Wally know it?
Yeah.
We're not sure if you know this language. I don't know any of it, but if we have to go through more of a virtual network because we keep losing the connection. So, we keep having to call dispatch for times and other things, and we hope to get that streamlined so it's just both systems talk to each other. I don't know what that's going to happen with that, but within, on the global side of that, is I know you requested money for the IT. That would just roll into that if needed.
Yeah, we're not sure how, but when we do the budget process and the budget reconciliation, we figure out how to, and whether or not some of people's requests will actually be moved out of their departmental budgets and put onto the IT budget.
Right, right, right.
But that's fine. We want people to be asking for it. We want to have the discussion, and then we can move it if we need to.
Right. Next page, hose and nozzles and gates, $5,000. We're just replacing old nozzles. Some of them came originally on some of the original trucks.
Don't you usually budget money for hoses, anyway?
Typically. But some of that's testing of the hose.
Yep.
So depending on what fails and what doesn't, this helps take care of that as well. Gear dryer, we were lucky, fortunate enough to get a grant for a gear washer recently from the state, $5,000. This would be the second part of that unit, to help dry the gear, which is the best maintenance you can do on your investment. We're currently using wet suit hangers that have fans in them for drying wet suits, which just isn't a real quick way to turn the gear around and get it to work, but it's not the most optimum. So we'd like to pursue going after a unit just specifically for drying, turn out gear when it's washed. With all the cancer alerts within the fire service, the gear wash is becoming more and more a critical step for what we do. EMS salaries. The increase of overtime for 5,000, just covering more medical, you know, we're in this, having to run double medic situation, and until people start getting cleared coming second half of this year, that'll start to loosen up our schedule and let us start to spread things a little bit more. But it's put a burden on what we're doing, and we knew going in, but we just didn't know what the focus is going to be. I think currently, we're five overspend, 5,000 over there.
Yeah, I mean, you've.
I mean, we have a money out of places.
You've got the, you've had to use more of that because you didn't have the two new prorated positions in place.
Correct.
So you've been overspending on one account and underspending on another.
Yep.
And then what this also goes toward is, you know, your base hourly rate that goes up each year, it, you know, when there's an overtime function, it's against that higher hourly rate going.
The dispatch training, increase for $500. We carry, I believe it's $2,000 or $3,000 at this point. We're just getting ready to roll out. We've been rewriting our procedures from the fireside. We've been working with Bob Eck to some best practices. He just got trained on the EMD training, part of it, and auditing. So that's going to dovetail into what we provide, and hopefully he can help provide some EMD best practices as well. So, probably in the last quarter of this year, we'll be spending that money. Next year, we'll be looking to increase a little bit of training and do, just be doing more of it, because we, it's an integral part of the dispatch, as us and EMD and all the other things. With that, I'd like to support, just mention and support, the Police Chief and Lieutenant pushing forward on the supervisor for dispatch. I know we did talk about that last year, and it's, to me, it's a crucial, a crucial step. Seen a lot of positive things coming when Bob has acted in that kind of pseudo liaison role, not a supervisor, but having that step to help you figure out problems has been key. So, that position expanding to somebody that is a supervisor that can help lead us to bring through these things, I think, would be key. Radio maintenance supplies, again, increase $1,000 due to aging units. Inspection and repairs, 2,000 as A2 starts to get a little older. Currently running a zero balance in repairs under the ambulance with the existing line item. Ambulance billing increased by 1,000 due to our increase in ALS billing. So as our billing goes up for ALS, so does our percentage, 6% or whatever, the 4%, I think, 3-point something. We'll be going more to ComStar, because we'll be billing more, so. Oxygens and refills are decreasing by 500. And then the only capital item is starting to equip that second ambulance as an ALS unit with a monitor.
Also, when that goes out now, it's not, if they had a staffing, the equipment's not.
Correct. The equipment is not on it. So literally at night right now, we're running as BLS most of the time.
Right.
So if we're at BLS, they take A2. During the daytime, they'll take A1, so they don't have to move the drugs and equipment out of the.
Gotcha.
So.
And when both are being used is when we have a problem.
But I'd like to entertain, instead of just chomping at the 55,000, what I would like to entertain is actually leasing a unit. What I did in the last place was we leased, and I think it was a five or six-year payment. So let's say we go into this next fiscal year, we get it mid, late year, whatever, we're into a five-year cycle, five or six-year cycle, well, by then, the existing unit's going to be close to 10 years old. So that's about the end of the life, is 10 to 13 years. So the thought was just carry, be having that equipment lease or, you know, every turnover for every year, or every five years.
Yeah, and the way that works is you can sign a lease up to three years, anything over three years, town meeting has to approve.
I think we just carried it on my operational budget.
Yep.
Whether it was legal or not, I don't know. But that, that's the idea, is to get, so A2 starts to get equipped in the ALS as well as the staffing grows and.
So are you going to get a separate proposal on what it would be for a five-year lease?
I can.
Yeah.
That's what you'd like.
Yeah, why don't you do that? We can have that discussion later this month.
But there was, the plan, a record for A1 was that was going to get re-bodied at some point, correct?
So, we spoke about that, and the bond notice isn't up until 23?
Yeah, because remember Joe, we, every, every time one ends, we authorize it and carry forward and do something else, yeah.
So the good news is, the rule of thumb was before was 100,000, 10 years old, 100,000 miles. Where.
That don't happen anymore.
It doesn't happen anymore, but the A2 is actually, we're using it more, but it's at like 83, 85,000 miles. So we got a little life left, and it's still, it's still running good. So, you know, over the next, we need to be planning in the next year to be do that, and that's in the larger budget, the capital budget, start looking at that.
The other multi-year can.
Right. And when, we talked about doing a refit, taking a new, putting a new chassis under it.
Under the box, right, yeah.
Of A1.
For A1.
A1.
Right, right.
A1's equipped to do that.
A2 would be if you stayed with a van.
Oh.
File front. But we hear pros and cons by it. And what's happening now is the state is pushing you to, instead of going out to a independent refit manufacturer, they want you to go back to the person that built it. So that's jacking the price up to about $100,000. So, current.
At that point, you just buy another one.
Current status, the new ambulances are going for around 300,000, 330,000 today. Yeah, shocking, I know. So, 3%, 5% a year, they go up, the refits around 200,000, 250,000. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of options. We need to really look at it hard in the next couple of years. There's some laws that are changing that may allow us, the federal standards, to allow you to go to an independent, or more of a generic refit facility, but that, here nor there yet. It's, you don't want to spend the money and then have them not.
The other thing, that's a good point you bring up. So the other thing I wanted to look at, I'm not sure if I said you, because you're the liaison, I am to them, is, is whether or not when the marijuana host community agreements get executed, my initial discussion with the auditor was that the money was going to have to go to the general fund, but now I'm seeing that you can have what are called capital stabilization funds. So we could maybe possibly create a public safety capital stabilization account, so that we'd be able to deal with acquisitions and have some sort of money that can go toward police and fire-related equipment. So that's something that still has to be looked at.
That's a broader discussion.
Yeah, and it's.
But it is something that may be permissive.
Because of the way the impact fees are negotiated.
Yeah.
Yes. And then there was also some talk about going to a, what do you call it, mini ambulance, like a transit.
The van?
Yeah, like a van, instead of a cab over type.
So, that came from the consultant when they did the fleet review. Since then, no one's really doing it, other than the big cities that burn them out and, you know, five-year, five-year replacement. So when you start looking at one of those being 150,000, and they're, but they're replacing it every three to five years, the numbers start to become more similar. And probably the best sale would be if we took you for a ride, and, especially if your back hurt, and then getting that.
Oh, yeah, no, I get it.
Well, Russ is leading the pack right now for rides and ambulances, but we're, at that we're not trying to.
Don't change yourselves.
But it's, you know, it's pretty much.
Russ is leading the charge on that one.
We're going to go with Russ's opinion on ambulance rides right now, because he's really the only one that's.
Didn't we call that quality assurance?
Yeah.
And with medieval armor suits.
Just the other part of that is, under the fire service, a lot of times, you have a structured fire guys, gals grab their gear and throw it in the ambulance in a cabinet. There is no outside cabinets, and so you don't want to bring your contaminated gear and put it inside the stretching area. So you usually see those ambulances on EMS-only operations.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
I do lead for fire, though. I've had him several times for burnt toast.
Okay.
So as far as the fire.
Good alarm system.
Right. My wife was on vacation.
So along with the equipment, the rolling stock issue, tonight, you're going, obviously, you're going to be voting to serve us the old fire ladder truck that's going to be sold.
Okay.
The chief and the deputy are going to be dealing with the final site visit for the engine pumper, right?
Yes, yeah.
You're going to be going to see that in April.
Yep.
So once that's done, then we're going to be in a position to take the other two units offline that were part of the.
It'll be a transition, but yeah.
Right. So we need to be thinking about how we're, this whole thing is predicated on two new units and three units going away.
Three going away, right.
So, or maybe one of them being repurposed, the old.
That's what I'm hearing.
The old fire rescue.
Dive team apparently needs a new truck.
Right, but somewhere along the line.
78 Chevy.
Somewhere along the line, we need to make sure that the plan gets implemented to the later stages.
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
We're on it.
Okay. Questions?
No. This is just to kind of see if there was anything out there, and you've certainly opened our eyes up.
The biggest one's the 55,000.
55,000.
Which we get, understand that.
And I'll get a lease.
Yeah, definitely.
Please.
And then we also have to start thinking about anything.
Year or two out, so.
How was the other one? A1's all right?
Good, fine.
No, I was asking you.
Yeah, is A1, is it all good?
Like that liquid spring in the back?
Yeah.
And if I can, can we just take.
I think I was in shock, I don't recall.
That's your, that's the answer I learned.
It's the drugs.
That's what we're getting.
Can we take a moment to congratulate the deputy on passing chief school?
Thank you very much.
All right, our next appointment is with the Fire Chief and Finance Committee, and I don't see the Finance Committee here yet.
I think I hear them coming down the hall.
Oh, perfect timing.
It looks like the finance.
Is it the creaking of the hips or?
Yep. So, Russ, come back up. Deputy Chief, come back up. Finance Committee, come on in.
Get a good seat, get a good seat. We just heard the clapping, who is dancing?
Deputy Chief passed the chief's, chief's school.
Congratulations.
Crowd up here, crowd up here.
How are we doing?
Robert.
Carl.
You should be up here.
No, you're okay.
You're the vice chairperson.
I am the vice chair, but if I have an issue, I'll move this chair.
Kick me in the back.
All right, we have all the Finance Committee members here tonight. This is an honor.
And then some.
All right.
We have a new associate member.
Is the building inspector coming?
Introduce a new associate.
I think he, and he had done a letter, and.
Yeah.
Well, you have the renderings from the previous meeting there on the table.
Okay.
The pictures.
Has your group, I mean, the last time, we didn't have all your members here, but have they all had a chance to discuss and look at the renderings, or do we need the, to go over this again?
Well, I'm not sure. You haven't seen this, right?
They were at the meeting.
We have a new associate member, John Beal.
Hey, John, how are you?
These are all different, right?
All right, well, why don't I just roughly, just to make sure we're all on the same page, and Chief, jump in if I should make a mistake. We are all aware that we have to address a serious issue at the fire station. We have some water issues that has done damage to the masonry. At the same time, we need to do the roof project. The consultants that we met with the last time are recommending two different types of systems for the roof, one being asphalt shingles and one being a membrane that would, PVC, that would give the appearance of kind of a slate roof.
Metal roof.
Metal roof.
Metal roof.
Metal roof. Okay. They are comfortable with either system. The membrane has been around for about 30 years, he said. Of course, the asphalt shingles have been around for longer than that, but these are a 30-year, heavy-duty.
Just like what's on.
Okay.
They're 30 years as well.
Okay. All right. So we decided, since this is such a large project, that we wanted the Finance Committee involved, because this is something we're, of course, going to have to take town meeting. We're talking over a million dollars, so it would be a bond issue. So we didn't want anybody feeling left out, and we're looking for people to state their opinion or anything, or ask any questions they'd like, so. We did get a recommendation from the building inspector, who's recommending the membrane system. Chief Anderson is also recommending the membrane system. I'm going to play devil's advocate. I was on a roof committee some 30-plus years ago, and we met with consultants, and we were told about this beautiful new system that had been around 30 years. And this was going to be the savior of all the town's buildings. And only licensed people were going to work on this roof, and it was going to be guaranteed, guaranteed by General Electric. And needless to say, the specialists showed up, this should have been the warning sign, the specialist showed up, they went around town to hire people to work with them. And they also had to purchase ladders, they had to purchase all their equipment here in town and surrounding towns. And they did all our roofs, and I think it was shortly after that where all the roofs started leaking. And we were in a protracted lawsuit for five, six years. Five, six years, national news, a lot of interior damage was done.
Chuck shifts.
So, when, I guess, from that perspective, when I have somebody telling me that this new system that can only be worked on and warranted by specialists, I, some red flags go up. I have a lot of concern about that. Asphalt shingles, if something drawn, we've got people that can fix it. So, for my two cents, I've heard the building inspector, I've heard you, Russ, but I'd be very concerned about this. And just to make sure everybody knows, even with the asphalt system, there is going to be a membrane underneath that. That's an extra layer of protection, so.
Water layer.
Water layer, right. And that would go down into the gutters, and that was where we had the water issue going into the mason area, which caused all the damage to the fire station. So that's my two cents. Terry?
I got two more cents than I get before, totally.
Okay.
Has anybody had a chance to check out those sites that they referred to?
My meeting was moved from Franklin to Hopkinton, so I didn't get down there.
Right, and we did not meet anybody from any of the communities at the Mass Municipal, like we had hoped to talk to.
Okay, so nobody's really. Well, we did get an email with the, you saw the, you saw the email with the different locations and.
There was a couple of photographs.
Yeah, that they had sent from other towns.
Of other buildings in other locations?
Did anybody actually speak to any of them?
We, all we did was talk to the consultants, who felt comfortable with either system. The membrane system is a little cheaper, okay? There would be some issues with snow sliding off, so there would have to be, that would be, have to be addressed with that great system, you know? But other than that, they felt comfortable with either system. They said that both systems are highly recommended, and it's really going to be our call.
What's the useful life of the asphalt shingle system?
Well, it's a 30, 30-year.
It's a 30-year architectural shingle.
Right.
But that, that's what was put on originally, and we're at 20 years with it. So, a lot has to do with sun, wind, you know, typical wear that they.
Right. But if there's any repairs or anything that needs to be due to the membrane, we can't do it. Has to be the licensed people to come in to do any repairs.
And that's a PNC system that we're.
Right, right.
As part of, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say, obviously, as part of a contract, there's going to be performance standards and warranty language, et cetera, et cetera. And I would assume, based on your comments, that we'll be paying special attention to that, to those items. As a matter of protecting our investment, it's not a guarantee that it protects the investment, but it may, in the end, be the best resource we have.
And a clerk of the work should be perfected into the price, too, so that we have a clerk of the work side site, which is different than your architect, you know, who's doing the construction.
Would that warrant an OPM, or is it just?
I don't think it, I'm not sure if it reaches the threshold, but we would, we would be looking at that.
To that point, you could also require, as part of the purchase spec, when this goes out to bid, is surety or performance bond guarantee against the project.
Right.
For a period of time, 10 years or, you know, 15 years or whatever, so that you would have, instead of having to go right to court, you'd have a legal resource to draw against in the event that it doesn't go as planned. Because, I mean, it almost, I see your point, but we've, it's been my experience so far, and this building is no exception, you know, designed by the lowest bidder and then built by the lowest bidder, what the hell could go wrong? We're going to be, you know, this is going to be no different. So I don't care if it's asphalt shingle, a membrane shingle, a glass shingle, I think a performance bond or something to back up the project would be a reasonable part of the purchase process.
You said a little cheaper, Mr. Chairman? What kind of money were you talking about?
100,000. It was about 190,000 to 100,000, but.
Yeah, Russ, you have the report right there.
Those are, those are estimates based on the architect's.
Right.
Estimating, estimating, they thought, depending on workload in the summer, that either bid would come in low down. They think that's a little, little heavy at this point.
Yeah.
But, you know, we've all seen bids coming out all over the place.
I mean, part of our process now is to be making decisions about which way you want to instruct the designer, architect, to go to the next step, which would be design it, get the bids, put it out the bid, and then go to town meeting with an actual number, not an estimate.
Right.
So that comes into play. And then the other thing that they also are finalizing is the stormwater issue. So our stormwater coordinator and DPW have also been working with them, because they have to supply information and make sure that the water coming out the roofs, you know, has to go to a place that's permitted and meets federal guidelines and state guidelines.
Right.
And those were things that weren't in place when the building was originally done.
Well, because that led to the gutters that were not designed right to back up the water all the way up.
Right, right.
Well, that's one way to keep it out of the brown.
Yeah. So our stormwater coordinator and our DPW people already went out and cited information, and they've already submitted that to the designer to make sure that they incorporate those added features into the process. And that was part of our work session meeting back in December.
Russ, the quote that we have for the PVC membrane, does that include the bars or whatever to keep the?
No.
All right, so. that, to those items. As a matter of protecting our investment, it's not a guarantee that it protects the investment, but it may, in the end, be the best resource we have.
And a clerk of the works should be perfected into the price, too, so that we have a clerk of the works, I say, which is different than your architect, you know, who's doing the construction.
Would that warrant an OPM, or is it just...
I don't think it, I'm not sure if it reaches the threshold, but we would, we would be looking at that.
To that point, you could also require, as part of the purchase spec, when this goes out to bid, is surety or performance bond guarantee against the project for a period of time, 10 years or, you know, 15 years or whatever, so that you would have, instead of having to go right to court, you'd have a legal resource to draw against in the event that it doesn't go as planned. Because, I mean, it almost, I, I see your point, but we've, it's been my experience so far, and this building is no exception, you know, designed by the lowest bidder and then built by the lowest bidder, what the hell could go wrong? We're going to be, you know, this is going to be no different. So I don't care if it's asphalt shingle, a membrane shingle, a glass shingle, I think a performance bond or something to back up the project would be a reasonable part of the purchase process.
You said a little cheaper, Mr. Chairman? What kind of money were you talking about?
A hundred thousand. It was about $190,000 to $100,000, but...
Russ, you have the report right there.
Those are, those are estimates based on the architect's estimating. They thought, depending on workload in the summer, that either bid would come in low down. They think that's a little, little heavy at this point.
Yeah.
We've all seen bids coming all over the place.
I mean, part of our process now is to be making decisions about which way you want to instruct the designer, architect, to go to the next step, which would be design it, get the bids, put it out the bid, and then go to town meeting with an actual number, not an estimate. So that comes into play. And then the other thing that they also are finalizing is the stormwater issue. So our stormwater coordinator and DPW have also been working with them, because they have to supply information and make sure that the water coming out the roofs, you know, has to go to a place that's permitted and meets federal guidelines and state guidelines.
Right.
And those were things that, that weren't in place when the building was originally done. Stormwaters.
Because that led to the gutters that were not designed right to back up the water all the way up.
Right, right. Well, that's one way to keep it out of the brown.
Yeah. So our stormwater coordinator and our DPW people already went out and cited information, and they've already submitted that to the designer to make sure that they incorporate those added features into the process. And that was part of our work session meeting back in December.
Russ, the quote that we have for the PVC membrane, does that include the bars or whatever to keep the...
No.
All right, so you can't do one without the other.
Correct.
It's a safety hazard.
Correct.
So, did they give us a quote?
They, they were going to look into that and come up with some cost factor.
So it's not going to be $100,000 cheaper? It, it probably won't be by the time you purchase, install, or anything?
You're, you're probably correct, Linda. They're probably going to both be about in the same price range.
I would say you'd do both about the same.
Right, by the time you throw. That's a good point.
With that grading, I mean, has anybody had experience with that? Because just on balance, I look at that, and I'm like, how much snow are you going to back up? And how is that going to affect the roof?
We had those conversations when, when they came in with this building inspector, and he said that the way the roof is designed with the existing valleys and the way they tie into the existing gutter system, they were pretty comfortable that it wasn't going to be a dramatic, more, more, not anymore than it is.
Most of it was going to go into the parapet sections because of the way the roof ankles were, and that if they had those things that Russ is talking about to break it up, you know, it wasn't going to be deep snow. It would be falling off when it was much more shallower.
Some of the questions we asked were, if you have those snow guards and snow is backing up, now we get into weight calculation, is the roof designed to, A, hold differently than it holds today? And the building inspector was comfortable with the answers that they gave on that engineer.
Yeah, those guards don't make the snow not come down. I have a metal roof. It's just a lighter thunder when it all comes off, and it just breaks it up. So should you be under it, you won't get impaled completely. You have a fighting chance to get out, because it is broken up. It's just not one hole, 10-second, boom, it's over. So it does help, but yeah, it's not going to keep the snow up there.
Okay.
And, and the plastic roof, yes, it probably won't even stay up there. It's going to continuously come off. So that was one of the selling points, it'd be on the ground quicker, which, you know, to me, the bottom line with, with, you know, Russ's deal with the original fire department that Russ was involved with, was, A, I'm sure somebody in this room said it was the best roof ever, which, just like we're saying, either one, 25 years, we won't be here to discuss, some other schmuck will be sitting here saying, oh, those, what were those idiots thinking? Either way, either one, either way we pick it. So the roof backed up because of the gutters, which then ate away at that deal, which then made the roof. So the 25 years, we might have got 30 out of that if everything didn't back up, but we don't know. We really don't know. You know, and then we have a cement issue that the bricks suck, and, and that all came apart, and that's why we see that pretty nice white thing that's not supposed to be pretty on the side of the building, that's decaying internally. So you have two major headaches, right?
Do we have, do we have, is there a danger with that right now? I mean, should that be...
It needs to be addressed.
The moisture's starting to deteriorate in the upper levels, where the moisture is, but it's going to be fixed through a repointing.
Right.
My guess is it's not a danger.
So they're going to clean all that?
I have heard it's something that could be down the road if we don't address it.
Okay, so is that something you're planning on doing first before you do the roof?
Yeah, the whole...
That's part of the problem. Cleaning the freightware. Cleaning that all out, making sure everything matches, and having spare bricks where they might need them.
Down the road.
And, and addressing the capstones, because remember, the whole thing was making sure that that PVC material, even under the shingle application, there'd be enough of it where we'd come down into the gutters.
Right.
And then up and over the capstone.
Right.
So we sit there and saw it until it...
So it'll never, it'll never leach out again, you know, where the brick was, with the capstone on top of it.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a big word, never.
To recap, whichever roof we pick, that's only a partial of that estimated million dollars. The rest is repointing, power washing the building, picking every stone up, relining the gutters, rebuilding the gutters, so it's not just a roof project.
Right. The capstones, the gutters. And, and, and again, it also has to address the stormwater all the way around.
Terry?
I think in the last email we got, there was two additional pictures of the fire, fire station.
Is that the ones that sent the ice on the side of the building, that one?
I, I don't know.
Oh, no, it was the shingles themselves.
There were two, two new ones, and I, when I was there Friday, last Friday, getting the burn permit, I noticed, and I parked, you know, in the front, not by the bays, but, you know, in the front, I noticed that it looked like the bricks were actually cantering out, like they were...
Some of that's a design.
That they actually are angled out.
Yeah, I think it's the corners are stepped, stepped out.
Stepped out.
Architecturally.
Okay.
They, they have done core sampling and things like that.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I hadn't noticed it before.
Yeah.
So the show of waves, the shingling of the boards underneath.
All right.
Final ques, well, maybe final question. We are going with an OPM, right?
We have to find out what the threshold is for that, so, but at the very least, there's going to be a clerk of the works from the town built into the budget going to town meeting. I'm just not sure what the law requires that, because I know it's a big issue in school projects, but I notice a pressure.
Last I know, it was law over $5 million, but I think it suggested, but you're looking at adding $100,000, $150,000 to the project to add to.
As long as we stay on top of the project, if everybody's already saturated with what is on their plate, I think it's a well-spent $100,000 to get an OPM who can oversee everything, report to whomever, and make sure that what we are purchasing, we're actually receiving, and not having to go to IBS to purchase whatever items that the company doesn't have.
Another benefit in this project is, is the group, the consulting group, is doing actual details, specific details to how this all works. On the original building project, there was a little bit taken for granted, taken advantage of, so that, no matter what roof you pick on this, I think our details are going to be much better, much, much better engineered, so hopefully.
Terry?
Yeah. Okay, so if we go with the membrane, and we write up a contract, I mean, is there a way to exclude, like, first-time people? Oh, we're going to give this a try to put it up? Can you say three, you know, five years' experience?
There has had to be certified guys to begin, there's only a limited amount of guys that can do it.
You have the right, you have the right to request...
Experience.
Experience, and then that usually is part of the bid process, that the town reserves the right to chuck out a bidder, that they, that even if they're the low bid, right?
Right, right, and that's fine, I just wanted to make sure we get that.
For a good reason.
The only difference is, on the shingle line, anybody can put a shingle on, to speak, versus this system, it's a...
Right.
Yeah, the specialized, yeah, that's what I'm...
In other words, if we go with that system, they own it, you know? I mean, only they can repair it, only they can work on it. We're living...
Okay.
Are there contractors that actually do use that, you know, does anyone know this?
New England-based.
Yeah, New England-based.
Western Boston more than, right here. And some of the roofs, I mean, none of us went out there, of course, but, you know, some of the roofs in the Boston area have been on 30, 35 years with the membrane, well past their 20 or 25-year guarantee.
Yeah, some Orleans, library, and these other...
Yeah, you know, so...
We can send you, if you give Robin your information, we can send you pitches of that.
Yeah. I mean, I think either one's good, you're right, I mean, the membrane, you, you own it.
Both have been recommended by the consultant.
You're also saying you have to be certified. Does anybody know the certification process?
It's an online course for two hours usually, but yeah.
It's a man, I'm sure it's a manufacturer certification.
How do you think we became selected? It was an online course.
See, part of the...
No, I understand completely, yeah.
The construction season and the school competing with other projects.
Right, that, that was another thing, that we're going to try to move this as quickly as possible, because we're competing with schools to get roof projects done. This is a priority item. Once it was identified by Ty and Von, the seriousness of the issue, that's why we're trying to move this as quickly as possible. So, we have a hearing in a couple of minutes, so I'm going to kind of do a poll of what people's opinions are, real quick. Ultimately, I guess, we have to make the decision, but I'm just kind of curious what the comfort factor is. Sheila, we'll start with you.
Don't start with me.
While you were sitting there.
She always says that, don't start with me.
Right.
I kind of like the membrane system.
Okay.
PVC membrane. Well, I would suggest talking to somebody who actually has this before going to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
So...
Yeah.
I abstain from forming an opinion until, I have no idea about this PVC system.
You got it.
I have PVC, but I agree with her that we need to check where it's...
You got it.
I've got a road trip, Russ, we're on a road trip.
Any opinion? Okay. Terry?
I liked the membrane, first time I heard about it. Second time, when you were mentioning the GE fiasco, that kind of brought back memories. And, but I could go either way, really.
Bob?
I'm, I'm good with the membrane, the one advantage I see is the fact that you're going to get, you know, to, I forget whose point was made, that anybody could put on a shingle, so anybody could bid the project. You know, this is going to be, hopefully, experienced installers. There may be some delays, because they may be 60 miles away to do something, but depending on how you write the contract, if you can do that well enough where, you know, they have to respond within, you know, so much time, and they have to be on site for so much time, if you can put that in the contract and they'll go along with it, then we should be okay.
Well, I just rely on our professional recommendations and ask that you pay special attention to ways to protect the town down the road. And I know you will, but it's something that, having been in your seat before, it's something we need to devote serious effort to, because we've been in this, kind of that situation too many times, where the product we bought didn't turn out to be what we thought it was. So do what you need to do to protect us, that's all.
All right.
Russ, the only amendment I would say on my vote is, we need to have the snowbreakers on there.
Oh, absolutely.
Without the snowbreakers, and you can't do the PVC.
No. I thank you very much for agreeing tonight.
Thank you.
Has everybody set on the schedule for our budget hearings? Did you, your group discuss it?
Yeah, we're all going, though.
Okay, good, good, that'll keep the process going.
We're having a little trouble with the quorum, but it's okay.
You know me.
Yeah. Carl's going to bring the donuts, so, you know, if you have any special requests, our dietary needs, let him know.
Our produce, produce requirements.
Doing a broccoli tray?
Yeah, oh, yeah. A little broccoli.
How about a veggie?
Good night, thank you.
Do we need the fire chief or anything else? I know you need the deputy for another issue.
You have a couple of letters in front of you, but I don't know if you need me here.
You mean action items?
Action items to accept.
He's got fire chief school done, so you're pretty much all set now.
Yeah, he's got some good donations. Somebody sample your lunch first, right? He's got some good donations.
I know.
Orange donation.
I know. Do you, we take it out of, yeah, we take it out of order, right? You've got all night. Just five minutes to take, take, okay.
Yeah, look, you don't have a big crowd, so you're...
Oh, wow.
Do you need signatures? You should have went and got them all.
Here they are.
Here they are now.
Chief, real quick question for you. This is the CDBG.
Budget, hearing, there's a budget meeting up with you with February 14th at 10 o'clock work.
You bringing flowers?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, something like that.
Mike Flann, I believe, will...
What's work?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
So, as written, so it shall be done, hallelujah.
Do you want a copy of everything he asked for?
Bye, Mr. Mr.
Terry, go ahead.
He's got it, perfect.
All right, Russ, you have some announcements you'd like to bring to the board's attention?
Action items, you mean?
You mean the action items?
Action.
Yeah, we call it action.
For, for A. And 5A.
He doesn't have a packet.
I don't have a copy of what you...
Here, there you go.
So, a couple of things. Number one, we want, look for you to accept the gift, the gift account in a tune of $135 from Kerry Kane. I believe that was from Suffield.
All right, need a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to sign it really quick.
This old business one's important, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, does it?
I haven't, I'm not certified for this, I didn't, I didn't take that online course, so. All right.
All right.
Second is another donation, I'll, I'll read you their letter, that makes sense. "To whom may concern the fire department and ambulance association, we're an important part of our family's lives for many years. Our dad served as a fire chief in his previous community and was very connected with his ambulance association. In their later years, we saw your familiar faces at the American Inn on behalf of our parents care as their lives became more fragile and, and are truly grateful. In their names, Henry and Shirley Wilcox, my sister and I would like to contribute to a portion of their charitable remaining trust to the Southwick Fire Department and Southwick Ambulance Association. The Southwick Fire Department donation in a tune of $15,000 in the Southwick Fire Ambulance in a tune of $15,000. We would like these funds to be directed to training and/or equipment for responders or for any other purpose that will improve the organization's capacity or quality of care in the community members. Please find our checks and close. Lee and I appreciate your hard work and work and dedication in providing these essential services to our community. Nancy Brown Roy and Leslie Lee Sheever," I think you said.
I know, outstanding. I need a motion to accept both these $15,000 donations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the, the last thing I believe I have is the approval, the federal fire act grant is open for the next month, and applications, 90% written, and we're looking at going for replacing, I think it's 30 portable radios and 15 of our apparatus radios, the truck radios themselves, which are all aging over 15 to 20 years. So that's part of the reason you don't see portables in the budget that we went through, is because I can't ask for it and then go for a grant for it. So we're going to concentrate on infrastructure things if we need to, and hopefully have luck with the grant to replace the portable.
So would that be the, the most modern radio out there? Like, will that get you that compliance you've been trying to get?
P25? Yeah, it has, it has to be with a federal one. So the dollar amount we'd be seeking from the feds is $73,000, and I think our portion's $3,000 to $5,000.
Would that work in conjunction with a future radio project?
That, correct, right. So, yeah, that'd be everything that Kevin and I have been talking about, building out for the future, this would dovetail, same models that we're looking for.
And it would work. Perfect.
Okay, just for clarification, it's estimated cost of $77,000. Federal share of the grant, if received, would be $73,115. Town of Southwick's share would be $3,885. So I need a motion to approve the chief applying for this grant.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it.
And, well, just before you leave, I, I think those two donations, you know, you guys do one heck of a job, and I want to thank you and your department for all your hard work, the board does, because that's, that's a very generous donation, but it's because of your dedication, so thank you very much.
Thanks, I mean, we've, we've already had some excitement and talk about providing other classes for the community, CPR classes and other things. It's going to give us a lot of room to do a lot of things, so it's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Thank you, Russ.
Yeah, we're gonna deal with the fire trucks or this bid in a while, but that's, that's a very important issue.
Yeah, we made a motion. All right, now we are gonna be going into a public hearing with Erica Johnson from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Erica, come on up.
Don't let him give you the short seat, that's the trick.
Did everybody sign it?
We all have to sign it?
I just wanted to say, there's a signing sheet that's gonna go with the grant application. If you're not from Southwick, you could write "Southwick" next to your name because you're in Southwick.
Very good. I like that.
All right, I would have had a sheet for you. I got distracted by all the fire talks.
Bring a thirty thousand dollar donation tonight?
Oh, yes, of course. I think I left it in my other purse.
Pretty amazing.
I do.
That's huge.
We should have. Let hold them, that's right. And they still did this though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, just.
Everyone's welcome. Hi, everyone. I'm Erica from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and I'm here tonight to talk about the town's application for community development block grants. There's an application due on the sixth of March, so.
Does Russ have to read the hearing notice that you put in the paper?
This is a, well, it was published in the Westfield Evening News on Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty. Town of Southwick requests for proposal, public social service programs. I'm not gonna read the entire thing because it was posted in the newspaper and I believe, yeah, it was posted in town and other, other places. Good enough.
I feel like that was very adequate. Thank you. So, this is my last trip out here before the application goes in. Sent around a handout to talk about the items that are gonna go into the grant application. My plan is just read down, talk for a minute, and if people have questions, you can stop me. The first is Northlake Avenue. It's gonna be a design-only project, similar, similar to Bungalow next door. It's a design for water main replacement, drainage improvements, street surface redo. We're still in the process of collecting income surveys, so if you have a friend or relative on Northlake who hasn't sent me one, I can tell you who they are. Please, please send them back. And I know Robin has been, been working on that for me, which I really appreciate.
Michelle Pratt could help her with that.
Everyone can help, really.
She's on that, she's in the store in town, you know, that's that area.
And so you're aware, I will be going back there to knock on doors again, so.
Awesome.
Apologize for the angry phone calls. The next is housing rehab, housing rehabilitation for income. Thank you. Beautiful. There's space for everybody. The next is housing rehabilitation and septic repair for income-eligible households in town. No target areas anymore, so if you meet the income requirements, you can be part of the program. We have a program going on now, so if anyone is interested, they should contact our office, Shirley Stevens. Let me try that again. Paula Delski, she's the one you wanna contact on that. I can get you more information about the program. We do have some spaces available and then we're gonna have enough of a waiting list. Right now, it looks like we're gonna be able to fit six in for the next grant application. And the final piece of it, we put out the social service RFP. We had one response come in and that was for our community food pantry. They put in a request of seventy-five. Thank you, I gave away my handout. Seventy-five thousand. I've gotten, made it this far. For seventy-five thousand for support of the food pantry. And then there's a PVPC admin piece out of that, 'cause I gotta get paid to come out here. And we're looking now at a total budget of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand once, once that's all in.
Can the food pantry use that money towards a building or no?
They possibly can.
This one, yeah.
Possibly.
They could use it towards a building.
Yeah.
Of a purchase, you know.
That's a solid, it depends.
No, I, not, not holding you to it.
It's okay.
The reporter just showed up, so she doesn't even know what we're talking about. She's late, so we're fine with her, so.
It depends. I look forward to having that conversation with Sally.
Yeah, you never know.
Did we give any more consideration to the issue of a, a car for the senior center for transportation?
Well, I think you were gonna talk to the council on heating director about who would be driving it.
I know, I know she, she had some concerns about volunteers and, and my thinking was that it's tough to get volunteers to drive a large van, a bus. People are, some intimidated because you have to use mirrors, it's tougher to back up, tougher to park, tougher to drive in general. And I thought the car, that we might be able to get more volunteers that wouldn't be intimidated driving that. So, that was my thinking. Any, any thoughts on that?
Me?
She knows what they look like. We sent her the pictures.
I do, you sent me pictures. They were lovely. My feeling about the car was that it would be a small enough monetary purchase that it would make more sense to pull out of a different account than, different account meaning not, not, you know, town account, but our, our program income, our miscellaneous account.
Thank you very much.
As opposed to putting it in a grant application.
Thank you very much.
There's the weight and the uncertainty.
Like we bought the last one.
We got a sure thing.
Yeah. To Chief Bishop, that would be an unfunded mandate. All right.
But since you're retiring first, Russ, you, you got a problem driving a van or you want the car?
I like the car, you know.
Okay, just checking.
My eyesight isn't as good as it used to be, you know.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Are there any questions or thoughts or suggestions from anyone?
I'm excited. This is great. We've done well in the past.
Yeah.
And, uh, let's keep moving that ball forward.
Let's cross our fingers that our.
We're actually just implementing the last contract.
Yep.
Right.
Yep, we have an RFP out for the Bungalow Street project.
Yeah.
And I've gotten a lot of, we, we've, we've sent out a lot of, a lot of documents and I've also had a lot of questions come in, so.
Good timing.
Yeah.
I know two people in Northlake. I will speak to them tomorrow.
Wonderful. Please let them, encourage them to tell their friends and neighbors.
It's that street though that you need, not so much north. It's, the folks on.
Northlake.
On Northlake.
Yes, true, true. Yes.
I mean, this really helps because if they're unaccepted streets, you can't use other pools of dollars for them.
Correct, correct.
There is benefit. They'll get something.
Sure, after seeing bedroom street all done, they see the difference.
I mean, this is a win-win-win all the way around.
And it's confidential.
Right, yeah, right.
I, I, I put them out with, I put them out with codes, not names, so.
I see you have signatures that you're looking for. Do we need to vote on anything prior to signing anything?
Well, I'm so glad you asked because I would hope that you'd take a moment and vote to make my friend Carl your environmental certifying officer.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Only the chairman can sign.
A motion for the chair to sign to make chief environmental officer and bottle washer.
Is there anything else for Carl to be in charge of?
Could you mention paper clips? Because he is great with paper clips.
He is awesome. He collects them.
I had no idea.
You should.
But I'm not surprised.
Just check your office and see if there's anything different.
His usefulness knows no limits.
The animated ones he loves the most.
Anything else, ma'am?
Well, yes.
All right. Suggested motions upon close of hearing. All right. Authorization of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to submit the proposed fiscal twenty Southwick Community Development Fund Grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development in an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, as detailed in the public hearing, and to include a design project on Northlake Avenue, a housing rehabilitation program in the funding for our community food pantry. You need that motion?
Motion to close a hearing.
Second.
Then, then.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Authorization for the chair of the board of selectmen or acting chair to sign all required forms, documents, authorizations pertaining to the proposed fiscal twenty Southwick Community Development Fund Grant application.
I'll make the motion for both of those as written for the chair to sign.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
That's for you. I'm gonna be back again to have you sign the budget page once that's all in and I have some more particulars beyond up twos on paper, so. Just so you know. So, I said it was the last time, but it's never really the last.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Thank you very much.
Good to see you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for signing in. I appreciate it.
Can't believe these guys all came down for this hearing.
And they got dressed for it, too.
I'm telling you, it's like a GQ magazine shot over here.
Okay, bye.
It's amazing what they'll do until we say yes. It's amazing what they'll do until we say yes, and then all of a sudden it all goes out the window.
Well, this is perfect because we are on perfect schedule, seven PM, because of the efficiency of this board. You know, it's just unbelievable.
And Carl's here.
And Carl's here.
I just hope much, but yeah.
Anyways, Chief Bishop and Lieutenant Landis, you have some reserve officer candidates that would like to meet with the police commission. Would you like to do the introduction?
Oh, get that point, man, but come get to this point to begin with first.
Okay.
Not, not too long ago, we were tasked with trying to take a look at our reserve unit, try and build up our, our detail officers. Lieutenant did quite an in-depth research on it. We really feel as though this is the best bang for our buck for, for trying to increase the detail officers and get more officers on their job at this point in time. We talked about specials, we talked about auxiliary people. We think the best thing right now is to put officers on that could also do road job details, but also be cruiser certified and then some of them moving up to position of full-time officers that we're presenting to you this evening. Process first was Sergeant Dennis did a conducted interview with him and the whole other command staff, all the other sergeants, the other potential, potential clients. And then Carl, myself and Lieutenant met with them. All of them did interview process with them also. And that's what brings us to this evening's level for that. Lieutenant, and yourself on that?
No, I think we just, we did a, the gentleman you're gonna see before you, we were very impressed with. We think out of the pool that we got the opportunity to speak with that this was, these gentlemen rose a little bit higher than, than that group. And so, I guess at this point, it's up to them to sell themselves to you.
There's a combination of these, of these gentlemen, that some were looking at just the detail officers and becoming cruiser certified. So, they're very positive. They all want to come cruiser certified. That helps us with order ends and gives us personnel to put on patrol. And some will find out our very career oriented, they wanna make it out at their home for full-time employment down the road also. So, that's all we have at this point in time. So, we just go by your sheet. I guess we'd ask Kyle Allen to come and stand before the board and.
Are you not gonna go like by height, the way they're all sitting?
Yeah. Is this a pecking order or, is it alphabetical? How are we doing this? What's the behind-the-scenes theory?
What's the tie where we have resumes?
Yeah.
Kyle Allen, nice to meet you.
I'm getting over a cold. You don't wanna touch me.
Hi, Doug Morgan.
Kyle Allen, nice to meet you.
I see you're going.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What's that?
And, and before we begin, I didn't even realize Brett was sitting there.
I didn't see him.
'Cause he wasn't in a suit, coat and tie or in uniform. But thank you for all your hard work, Sergeant Bannister. Okay. Sorry, Kyle. Go ahead. Why do you wanna be a reserve in Southwick, Massachusetts?
Well, sir, I'll start from the beginning. Like you said, my name's Kyle Allen. I, I went to school at Southwick. I graduated Southwick High School. I was captain in the wrestling and the track team and I'm, I'm very familiar with the town. I, I grew up here, like I said. And I raced motocross here for a while, for about eight years. And I also did an internship at the Southwick Police Department for my senior year of high school. And I must say, I truly enjoyed it. And from that point on, I knew that I wanted to have law enforcement as part of my life. I went on to get my, my associate's degree at Holy Community College and then my bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And from there on, I actually found a full-time position in the postal service where I still work. And I, from there, I was also taking civil service examinations in Westfield, California. They offered me a full-time, or a reserve officer position, excuse me. So, from there, I accepted the position and I'm doing both. So, for about the past year and a half, I've been working full-time in the postal service and working as a reserve officer in the city of Westfield, doing cruiser shifts, CPR and first responder certified. And I enjoy it. I enjoy what I do over there. And I would like to bring that knowledge and what I know about the town of Southwick over to this department. 'Cause I feel like it could be very beneficial for here.
Thank you. I think you're at your two minutes. Did you want?
No follow-up, sir.
No follow-up?
So, you're in Southwick now? You live in Southwick now?
I live in Westfield, sir.
Live in Westfield?
That's it.
And what's the theory? Can it be a reservist at two or is it gonna have to drop on?
I do not have an issue with that. That's up to them wherever he works with the Westfield PD.
Okay.
Our standard's always been, we let them come through the door if they have a badge. We find out they're not meeting our standard for their training, for their things. After we shake their hand and send them on their way.
Which we've done recently, so it's a whole nother issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Heads up to see what that one was, one twenty-six, that one was.
I thought we had more time.
I thought you gave me that sign. Oh, okay.
Yeah, I thought you were saying he was number one.
So, I can go back and ask Kyle a question?
Yeah, go ask Kyle a question.
So, Kyle, Kyle, is your, is your long-term career objective to be a full-time police officer somewhere?
As of right now, sir, no. I'd like to stay with full service and stay as a reserve officer.
Very well.
That could change.
That's right.
Well, the next gentleman that we have is Stephen Denal.
Sir. Nice to meet you. Steve Denal. Nice to meet you.
Hi.
Doug, nice to meet you. You as well, sir.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come here and advocate for myself for this position. Currently, right now, I work full-time already in a neighboring town. I'm a full-time police officer at Westfield State University. This is my second department that I've worked full-time for. I was at Holy Community College prior to that. And in two thousand fourteen, I started working for the Hammond County Sheriff's Department where I spent approximately three years there. So, with that being said, I feel as though my experience and qualifications are, are, meet, meet the, the needs for this department in Southwick. I've spent approximately the past eight years in and around Southwick. I've been born and raised in Connecticut. I lived in West Southfield on Halliday, on Halliday Drive, which is right over on the lake, so I'm very familiar with the lake community. And I currently live across town in Suffolk, right off of seventy-five. So, the proximity in which I live to the department is, is very close and it'd be easy for me to get here. But with, with my determination and dedication to the law enforcement profession, I think that I can bring a lot of, a lot of support and, and, and quality work to this department. I'm very eager and anxious to start working road jobs, to start filling shifts as needed by that department. And, you know, given the opportunity to be able to work for this department, I will be giving my best at everything that, that this department has to offer to me.
Do you wanna ask your question?
It's the same question.
I know it is.
So, is your long-term aspiration to be a full-time police officer with the Southwick Police Department or?
So, I currently, I, like I said, I currently work full-time for Westfield State. I have, I have since two thousand twelve been invested in the State Department. So, for me, it's been, it's, it's been a back and forth battle about deciding whether or not I wanna leave the state and go full municipal, just like Kyle was saying, that it's always a possibility. If, if the opportunity is something that lines up well with me and my family, then I would, I'd be willing to take that. But right now, I'm looking to start working as a reserve, do the best I can there and then see what the future brings for me.
There's no wrong answer to that question for all you guys, by the way.
No.
Just so you know, I think, see, is this, is this two minutes? So, I can go off thirty seconds on my own tangent. So, I've always, and I've talked to the chief and lieutenant.
Well, he's retiring soon anyway.
You know, so I'm talking to the lieutenant, new chief, or whoever, whoever's gonna be the chief over there.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's two distinct needs in the reserves, right? One is, we use that as a bench and then we also need a steady group of reserves that can fill shifts, work details, et cetera, et cetera. And they're, they're both equally valuable to the town of Southwick and to the department and to their, to each person, right? Since the five years or so I've been on this board, we put, I think, three or four people on the reserves. They are all, to this day, well, except for one, four out of five, they stand, are officers in the town of Southwick. But that was the recruiting drive at the time. We needed reserves because we knew we had a wave of retirements coming. Now, we probably have the youngest police force in Western Mass. But, so there's a need for both. And that's the basis for my question is to make sure that we are, you know, stalking the reserves, if you will, with, with both groups. And I think, you know, the, the chief and lieutenant and sergeant are fully aware of that. So, I'm just asking that question for my own edification to know where, where we're going. Thank you.
So, we're no longer in the sheriff's department?
What's that, sir?
You're no longer doing the sheriff thing?
No, sir.
All right.
I worked there from two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen.
Gotcha. So, are you like days at Westfield State now, nights?
I worked a night shift.
All right.
So, my availability is wide.
I've gone a ticky yet. That's why I was asking, 'cause you're more nights, so.
I think with that, we're gonna expose it right now.
Next.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I did, I did notify everybody, this meeting is pre-recorded.
All right, okay.
That's, that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure I made that statement.
It's all good.
Gentlemen, our next candidate is Matthew Olson.
Open with a joke, they say.
How are you?
Nice to meet you. How are you? Nice to see you again.
Hello, everybody. Guess I'll just start off by saying.
Yep, absolutely.
I do wanna be a full-time officer here for this department. I wanna live the rest of my day in Southwick. I wanna work for this town and do the most I can for this town and give back to the community. I had an internship at the Southwick Police Department in the fall of two thousand thirteen and it really gave me a view as to how the police department
fall of 2013. And it really gave me a view as to how the police department was conducted. I grew special relationships with many of the officers there, and I respect them so much. And it's part of the reason why I want to go into this field, to carry on the tradition of what the Southwick officers do. So, I went to college, I went to Springfield Technical Community College. I got my associate's degree there. And then transferred to Westfield State University, and I got my bachelor's in criminal justice. I just completed the Reserve Academy with a couple of my nice co-interviewers. So, I'm just, I'm highly motivated to start working. My schedule's open. I'm ready to start training whenever's necessary. It's been a passion of mine for a long time. It was before I had my internship in 2013 that I really wanted to see what it was like. And after that experience, it just grew ever so much. So, I, I'm ready, I'm willing and able to do whatever it takes. I want to be a reserve officer. I will cover shifts, I'll do details, I'll do whatever is asked of me. I would, my goal is to go through the full-time academy and become a full-time officer for this town. So, that's where I'm at right now.
Okay, you took care of Mr. Mogul's question. Mr. Dede?
Are we working now somewhere?
No, sir.
Thank you.
So, I live at home. I live here in town. I was born and raised here. I worked at the Notch Travel Center for five years, and I just recently left there.
Not gonna hold it against you.
No, that's fine.
So, so your parents okay with you? Right, because you've probably got another solid year of training before we put you on.
Oh, absolutely.
You know?
Yeah, my parents are all for it.
You still live off of them? Everyone's cool with it?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No, seriously?
No, no, I know.
That's what it takes?
Yeah, no, they are.
To get there?
They're fully on board with this process, so.
No student loans you gotta pay back?
No, sir.
It's gonna be tight, I don't think.
I went to the community college, and I paid that off when I was going to stick.
Attaboy.
And then after I did that, my parents helped me out with Westfield State, because I did that at stick, so.
Is there a pecking order that you're gonna come up with? Because some of these guys, like you say, will be able to go out and do traffic, maybe not as the 3,000-hour training.
Just around the time our FTO officers we have, we'll be looking at the ones that might, might probably have the most experience to begin with.
Right.
The signs of the FTOs, Sergeant, will you speak up from saying it wrong? He's in charge of our FTO program.
Right.
We probably put our more advanced ones with FTOs right off the bat, so that we get them in to get them approved, and they start working. But again, a gentleman like Mr. Olson here, who he hasn't indicated, but there's no conversation I've had with him, one of the reasons he did leave his job is anticipation, hopefully getting his foot in the door here, he would be available to work many hours as possible that we could give him. So, that's the commitment that he does.
Some guys we see come up to speed rather quickly. And then, you know, we don't realize it, but later we find out they had a full-time job, they were barely able to give, you know, him four hours a week. And it took a year before they were, you know, cruiser certified. But others have come through rather quickly, and I think...
That's my goal, do it, do it as soon as possible, to get as much training as possible, so.
If you do, if you do, make a decision, point all, you know, all five of these candidates, we would sit down, again, the three of us, and decide which ones will be assigned FTO right off the bat.
Right.
And if I just leave it up, like say, say he's not assigned one, we're still giving the freedom to basically come in and ride with anybody.
Sure.
Not getting FTO credits. My philosophy's always been, any time in a seat with another officer, you're still learning something, and you're still, you know, getting seat time, I call it, at that point in time.
Okay. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hope you feel better.
I feel great.
That's all.
That's okay. That's, we got, we're all night.
Yeah, literally.
Alec Sanchez Jr.
How you doing, Alex?
How are you, sir?
Good, very good.
Nice to see you again.
Okay. Full disclosure, Alex and I served on the rec center board together.
Yes.
So, just full disclosure. Okay.
Is Alex still there?
Well, we, we hope he's gonna keep working.
Okay, just full disclosure.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to at least tell you a little bit more about ourselves, other than just the resume. You know, I also want to thank the chief and lieutenant for, you know, giving us that time to interview us and let him know, you know, what we offer to, to residents in Southwick. I am a resident. I moved here in 2011. I have two daughters who have basically grown up in this town. We are stabilized. We're gonna stay here for as long as we can. I have experience in policing. I have 21 years in Springfield, Southwick, I mean Sunderland and Hatfield. And, you know, in interviewing, I hope to complement the police department and help in any way I can with anything that they ask me to do. I love this town, and I think I can do a lot of things if given the opportunity to complement the department.
I don't have a single question for you, sir.
I, I am a...
This is a fantastic resume.
Thank you. I am a full-time faculty at Holyoke Community College. I teach criminal justice.
I see that.
And some of this, some of the officers that are currently working in Southwick were my officer, were my students.
Oh, so can you stay after class then for a couple of minutes?
But it's, it's nice to see that those guys have, have gotten, gotten ahead and they're fulfilling their dream. And I, I would be very proud and honored to work with them, alongside with them and anyone in this department.
So, just so I have this straight. So, you were, you are a professor at HCC?
Yes, sir.
You were a police officer and detective in the city of Springfield?
Yes.
City counselor in the city of Holyoke?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm done.
I think you're applying for the chief's position.
Well, as soon as you leave, we're giving it to him. No, I mean, like, leave the room.
Mr. Dede?
Actually, Landis is, we'd probably give it to Landis, because he interviewed better than you did, quite honestly. And then maybe you or the guy behind you there has been barking up the tree.
You've got a long lead.
You do. The pecking order, it's long. So, I laugh. When did I interview you last? How many years has it been?
And I believe in 2012.
We interviewed you.
And then I...
For reserve?
Yes. And, and we didn't pick him, and I was disappointed then. And since then, you taught my daughter, actually, at college.
Yes, Liz, yes.
So, I was ecstatic when Bishop had said you had reached out. I was, I'm ecstatic because your knowledge, the schooling, the professor part, there's so much you can bring to our department easily. So, yeah, I'm, I'm ecstatic. It was just great to see you come back and you didn't lose interest. Actually, he timed out of his original time as an officer. He had to go back through the academy.
Back to the academy.
To come in front of us.
There was a couple of...
That's dedication.
Yeah, it is.
Couple of less seasoned officers or recruits that went to the academy a second time around.
Yeah. How did you place this time around? Did you come in second or third, or were you...
In the academy?
Yeah.
Well, I was elected president of the...
Of course you were.
Did you actually, did you teach that academy at one time?
No, but they, I've been asked to go and teach.
And teach, yeah. Well, you're busy now, so that's not gonna happen.
So, you finished the academy, then they asked you to come back to teach at the academy?
They had asked me before, and then they told me I had to go to the academy. So, it was like...
We didn't need the whole two minutes, chief.
Yeah.
That'll be the summer.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's the other thing.
Thank you very much.
I'm available in the summer to work.
Yeah. And that's another bonus, right? We have you all summer.
Thank you for...
You wanna drive a boat?
Where were you last summer?
No, okay.
Have to train him on the boat.
We won't hold it against you.
That's right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say good day, Alex.
Nice to meet you. Thank you very much.
Stuff to do.
Okay, who gets the follow-up?
The last candidate for gentleman is Mr. Thomas Shay.
Yes, sir.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Mr. Ten.
Hello.
Hi, how are you, Mr. Shay?
Good seeing you, Tom.
Nice to meet you.
It was staple. It was flipped with the other one.
You're all safe.
Okay.
Same as the other gentleman. Thank you for your time. Chief, Sergeant, Lieutenant, thank you very much.
I'm a deputy fire chief in Holyoke. Been there for 28 years. I found out that the city needs reserve officers. I figure with my experience as a firefighter, dealing with people on their worst days, it might be a really good fit. So, decided to sign for the academy. It went very, very well, surprisingly, after not being in school for so many years. It went very, very well. With the hours I have with the fire department, I'm off five days a week.
Oh, wow.
So, I'm available days, nights, weekends, holidays. I've done all that as a younger firefighter, so I know what it's all about. And whatever the chief needs me to do, we weren't happy to do it. And that's pretty much it.
I don't think you need to ask your question.
I do. You used to live next to Alan Schlesler.
Yeah, right across the street.
Oh.
No questions, sir.
Mr. Dede?
So, I know, I'm assuming the fire world, you'll time out eventually?
Yes.
Right. Does that work in the reservist world too, Kevin?
Sixty-five.
Two weeks, sixty-five. So, we have you for a couple good more years?
At least nine, solid years.
Oh, beautiful.
I'm not going anywhere. This is not gonna be a stepping stone or anything else.
No, no, you're past that. This is...
Yes.
I'm with you. I'm with you. Trust me. No, that's great. Wonderful.
And my kids are all done now, so I really don't have a whole lot of obligations besides work.
You have a wife still?
Yeah.
Okay, you have an obligation.
That's why he wants out of the house.
Let the record show, you still have an obligation. Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
We're taking three or six.
We ever had a firefighter be a reserve before?
Yeah.
All right, you're making recommendations.
Have we ever had that?
Well, Westcott, not firefighter, be a reserve, but yeah, I mean, the fireside has come over.
Yeah, but they never did both. It's kind of interesting.
I don't think they would, their past chiefs would allow that, because you've had two that could've. Literally Bridges is EMS stuff, and Westcott was EMS stuff.
If he wanted to stay, yeah. If he wants to stay out, if it sort of affects his full-time job here, then that's where he goes, sit down on the scene, he has to make a decision about it.
All right.
He has to make an argument.
No, no, no. Right. They keep their certifications up, though, don't they?
I believe he has them.
Right. Him and Westcott both, I think, keep their stuff up, which is great. It's nice to have them on the scene and have that backing behind them of their years. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
All right. Chief Bishop, are you making a recommendation to this board?
After being interviewed by a sergeant, by this Carl, Lieutenant, myself, after what I've seen against my, this board, we want to bring, before I got, I'm gonna make a recommendation of the board appoint all five of these candidates to our reserve.
I need a motion.
I'm impressed. I gladly make that motion for all five of these guys.
I'll second the class of 2020, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fire department's taking applications for call members as well.
Gotta get up pretty early in the morning.
Right. Depends on what building you report to, correct? Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
We're gonna step him back in, we're just gonna talk to them, but we...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 'cause I want to know how the building's coming along. And Landis is here, so I figured I'd ask him.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good night, guys.
Good night. I'm going back home, I feel I look like a bum.
I didn't say you looked like a bum.
You snuck in, I didn't even see him either.
I thought you were undercover.
Well, no hat does that. No hat, he throws me off every time with no hat.
Okay, we're taking a brief...
Intermission.
Break.
Recession.
Recession, the reconvene in five minutes.
Think you tell he's getting older.
All right, we're back in session. We are going to take Chief Bishop and Lieutenant Landis to address some of the items in the action items. And what number would that be, Mr. Steinhardt?
Well, let's see, the use of force policy.
Nine A? Nine A, I got this.
Nine A.
Nine A.
Nine A.
You could use this with force.
Do we want to do 3A, the police gift account, K-9 first?
Sure.
All right. We have a letter from Chief Bishop concerning a $1,000 donation to the Southwick K-9 gift account from Felix Construction and Landscaping.
Wonderful.
So, I need a motion to accept that?
Gladly, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to sign it really quick. Then we're going to 9A. All right. We have a letter from Lieutenant Landis, and this is concerning the department's use of force policy for our review. And this is an ongoing review of different policies. And you've been good enough to give us the old policy so that we can compare it to the new policy. Lieutenant Landis, you have the floor.
Well, this is one of the, probably the most extensive policy. What you're gonna see is, they've taken some of the older ones and put them together, so it's, it's one policy. So, the old ones I did put in there, but it's a bunch of different forms with regard in how you use your, whether it be a stun gun, whether it be your old, your pepper spray. They've incorporated into one form. And then our new 40-millimeter or less than lethal weapon that we purchased, the guidelines for that's in there, because prior to this, we didn't have any impact weapons. So, that's, those are the biggest changes that you'll see, yeah. Those are the biggest changes you'll see in that. And it's just based on best practices by the mass chiefs of police. So, whatever, you know, you feel comfortable with, probably would, was the standard, Ben, to send it out, you review it and send it off to the town attorneys for review as well, is that, this is the stuff that's gonna get us in the most trouble. So, so, you know, these things that you, you really want to go over with a fine-toothed claw.
So, I actually have to move this.
But you, but this has come through the Mass Chiefs Association?
Yeah.
So, it's already been vetted by the Chiefs Association.
Right. So, once you, you, you review it and you compare it to the old, you'll see, it's just kind of just melding a lot of the stuff together and just implementing the new impact weapon with the strike areas for it. But there's a lot to see. That's why I just submitted the one this time.
Have you been working with town council directly, or...
I, on the other stuff, I haven't heard from them at all.
Which other policies?
I don't know if any of the stuff got sent over before, the policies I submitted with the, there was like five policies I submitted.
Yep. We reviewed the old ones and the new ones. We made a recommend...
Those ones, they, well, they just concur. The chief, the chief actually updates the updates the policies and all the board does is it has thirty days under the law.
Right, but there was a lot there. We figured we'd go beyond the third, whatever it takes for you guys to look at.
I thought they were being forward to town council.
Right, well, he's working with Ben, so he's.
Okay, you just said he hasn't heard anything from.
No, we have not, we thought it was our understanding is we submit it to you guys. You make your determination yourself with town council if you want them to review it.
Previous meeting.
I think we did okay at a previous meeting.
Okay.
But I didn't check with town council, I just reviewed it.
The thing is, Bob, there's a lot of things you've asked Bob to work with town council, so let's not confuse which ones.
Okay, okay, just for clarification. Some things he was going to work with town council on.
Right.
But you haven't had any discussion?
My understanding was, once you reviewed them, if there was some that you wanted to send to town council, you would say you guys would forward it and then I would work with anything that they needed to deal with, yeah.
Okay. Is everybody comfortable?
I think we approved the other batch at a meeting and, because we reviewed it and it came back up again and we approved it as written.
Because if, because if that's the case, then I can actually start to institute them.
Yes.
I don't recall an actual vote.
We did.
We did?
Yeah. I, I think, if I recall, I don't remember the process after, but I was tasked to review the old and the new and come back to the board. I did do that. And we came back and we voted on it, but I thought that they were going to then check, just double check with town council that they were okay with it after that. But if that's not my understanding, I could be wrong.
It was our understanding, we would submit it to you. You could submit it to anybody you so choose because they, because like I said, if we, if you approve it, those other ones right now, now you're telling us to give it to the attorneys. He may have red flagged. We've already approved the policy.
Yeah, if you want council, you don't approve something if you want council to.
If you want to give us instruction from point forward that we submit everything to council, we'd give no problem.
No, I don't think we need to. I thought that that was part of, part of the process. But if that's unnecessary, we don't need to do that.
Well, if these are generic policies coming from the Mass Chiefs Association, they've already been vetted by.
The other ones were too?
Oh, yeah.
Are we talking about these ones?
Yeah, but the other ones were too.
The ones we presented recently, yes.
We were fine with those two, those were, they were substantive, but they were good changes as far as I was concerned.
Okay.
And that's what you'll see will reflect in here too.
Correct.
Just remember, you asked the police department for an extension because under the law, it's thirty days and then they're automatic.
Okay.
But we will say on that too, if we do present, then you want more time. We're not concerned if we're implementing it, we will verify each one, you know, we're not going to.
Same drill then?
Same drill.
Okay.
I'll read this one too.
So do you want the other ones?
No.
No.
No, thank you though.
Please.
Okay.
But being this one, again, because the importance of it, like I think Russ is leaning on it, right? And I know what Carl was saying, it has been vested, you know, the chiefs have accepted it. We have an attorney that's on board for the police, you know, the Chiefs Association. But again, if you want to run it by our own town council, that's, it's an option that you have. Because all we've got is opinion by, you know, some of that.
I wasn't aware of that previous, that there was, had already been reviewed by an attorney.
I mean, you might be a couple scenarios and some of the policies that might be really come under the labor council.
Right.
Because when it comes to reprimanding somebody for doing something wrong, maybe, but I haven't yet to really see anything that's there.
Well, that's a whole different council.
There's going to be more, exactly.
Oh, they know that.
That's a whole different council.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, this stuff is more the civil liability stuff for negligence and, you know.
So I want all those new cadets to read this and give me a summary.
Oh, yeah, they will be, they will be.
Just have one do it.
Just have one do it.
I can tell you which one.
I didn't want to say Sanchez, I want to report by tomorrow morning, but.
Like we said.
They did their gun test already.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good move.
But like Lieutenant said too, is that this basically took five of our own policies that were already approved by the board, consolidated those five into one.
Yeah, cleaned up all your house. That's great.
So it has been vetted?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, do you want to go to the, another attorney?
No, I think we read it and if we have any questions, we'll.
So just table it for a future meeting?
There you go, for the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
Not for a future meeting, the next meeting.
Right.
So then officially, though, the other ones that I previously sent you, they're good to go and I can submit, I can just get them into the works.
Absolutely.
All right, okay.
Because speaking of that, just for education things, because you guys are our budget, one thing he did approve for us was a software program now for our policies and procedures. Lieutenant takes all these policies, procedures, they go into the software program, person actually acknowledge them right through the system. They read them, they understand them, they will comply to them, an electronic signature, you know, showing it. So it's a really nice little program that he has set up now because of the funding, you know, you gave us in the past. So it's just more documentation that everything is read, understood and ready to be applied, so just a benefit.
Good, very good. Thank you for all your hard work.
He's doing well, there's more to come.
Do we have any other issues for Chief Bishop?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, Lieutenant submitted a letter to Carl this afternoon.
That's in the chair mail?
Yep, authorize, let's see, accept a reserve officer, record bird's resignation and then authorize the police department to submit a US Department of Justice grant application for an additional SRO officer.
Okay, the resignation, we need a vote to accept that or?
Um, you can just.
Just acknowledge it.
Doesn't stop whether the person submits.
So will we acknowledge that and thank that individual for their service to the community?
Yep, Cindy's going to be doing a certificate of appreciation.
All right, now, the, this was, wasn't in our folder, this application. So I'm going to suggest to the board that we table any action on that. I went over this with Carl, we had some, a little bit of discussion. And I'm going to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer tonight, but we have to think about it. I know this grant would be bringing on another officer.
Correct.
Okay, and after X number of years, we'd own that officer.
For one year commitment.
Right.
One year, yeah.
Okay. You've also, and we even heard Chief Anderson tonight, talk about the importance of a supervisor for the dispatch. And again, I don't need an answer tonight, but when we go through the budget process, we're going to have to prioritize. And what's more important?
No disrespect, I'll say right now prioritized is the dispatch supervisor, no doubt.
Okay.
On the table right now, Lieutenant may yell at me in the morning, but I can tell you right now from what I've done for that dispatch unit.
Well, we have to do dispatch, that's the road we're headed down.
That would be my number one priority right now.
But there'd be no harm in submitting this anyway.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, we have to look at facts.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That, you know, let's say we do get, you know, I don't want to, you know, and there could be the possibility, the money isn't there to continue that position.
It'd be something we face with three years down the road.
The backup to, I wouldn't say backup or safety net, but with regards to this whole process is what they want to know is, okay, what is your contingency in the event the town financially can't handle us to avoid layoffs? What are you looking at? How can you absorb this body? One would be through attrition. At that timeframe, we're going to be looking at.
Someone's probably leaving.
Yep, it's possible, but these are things that you look at, how can you absorb? Also in the five-year plan that we have, it is for the hiring of two bodies over the next few years. So in keeping with that, you know, it's still, we might be able to absorb that and in the event there's a financial issue, we could, we could, through retirements, probably cover that loss.
Is this position now, since it's a resource officer position, are we limited in future years?
Well, what it is for right now, and it's attached to it, you can see, is that the person has to spend seventy-five percent of the time in the schools. And it's very, it is strict with regards to an SRO, but then we, you would have some summer and stuff where you could use this body as well. You have to retain them for, like I said, the, for twelve months after.
But would he have to be, I think Russ asked, would he have to be in the school, school resource position?
At that point, probably not, because they stop paying you money. They'll stop paying you money.
Say, even if, even if you had to. There's nothing that keeps the chief of police under his right of assignment from taking the non-federal funded one and putting it back in the station.
Right.
After, oh, that's what we're saying.
Anytime, anytime.
About during the grant, I don't know.
Not during the grant.
We'd have to leave two months.
Why, this is, this is a second one?
Right now, this is a second SRO, but the first one, if you had.
But that was not grant, that was not.
Yeah, no, no, the first one, if we had to pull that officer, you know, one of them's funded federally, one of them is.
You could pull them.
You could pull one.
You could pull the non-federally funded one.
And I just did some rough numbers, just so I could give you something to work with and what are you looking at. Because based on the planned ten percent pay raise that the guys will be getting July one, I went off of that number.
That's good.
But conservatively, conservatively, I figured two per, conservatively, it was two percent.
Where's ambulance?
Yeah, but conservatively, two percent, so what it, the first year would be thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Second year, fourteen thousand, two hundred. And the next one last year would be fourteen thousand, five, but then the fourth year would be a full, the twelve month.
Full under.
But during this timeframe, and I did see, see the superintendent on this letter to get them in the loop because they certainly have to agree to another SRO in their school based on our MOU. But maybe, you know, we could look at funding these three years with maybe some sharing between the school and Tallinn and Granville.
Because we owned that first one, this town owns him completely.
We would own this one too, but.
No, understood, yeah.
Never asked them for money.
Whatever numbers, I guess, as I said, if you guys take it any further, would be just a guarantee that you would have, you guys would be responsible for the twenty-five percent. But I am going to be going to the school and asking them to split this fifty-fifty for over the next three years. Might as well put them on notice and ask them, we're providing a big service for them. You know, so I'd ask them to at least open that door, see if they would match the funding for that twenty-five percent. I don't know if I could stretch it to the last year of them funding half of the full-time officer that fourth year, especially if we're not using it in, you know, as a school resource officer at that point in time. But I would like to at least ask the question from them and see what we get for response.
And these funds have been, they've been tough to get anyway, the fight of common, didn't get the safer fund. That's why we.
Yeah, it's not easy.
It's not easy, but let's face it, in a perfect world, the other night, I think, well, the other night, months ago, at one of the community policing graduation, I had several people come up to me. How come we don't have a police officer in every single school?
See, that's what I heard.
And I, and I said, if we had the money in a perfect world, that would be great, but we don't.
Yeah.
And, and luckily, we're a campus system, so it's, it's working very well with one officer.
Yeah.
And I just didn't want to get down the road to a point where people kind of say, well, we always had two, now we should go for three and, and.
Yeah, you are kind of opening up that door, but, but I get it. But the bottom line is, if this came through, if we had to, you could pull the one that's non-federally funded and put them back in the service and you could still have one up there that the government's paying for for three years. So, not that we would, but you could.
Right now, I have to be all honest, my ambition would be for the next three years, they have two at the school. I know, like you said, people become accustomed to it, you know, and.
I think the dynamics of the job and the demands for it and what the school, what we're going through with the school and just the different things we're faced with from the social media issues and stuff.
Yep.
One guy's time is consumed, and we're doing more incident reports now than we've ever, ever done. And they're not really, a lot of them aren't fortunately major incidents, but there's stuff that still needs to be documented, needs to be handled. Then you have, you know, in the younger issues, some of the mental health challenges that we're facing, that we're getting involved with and that normally, there's an argument to be made, if an officer wasn't in the school, somebody from within the school would generally be handling it. But we're getting, we're involved in that, so after three years goes by, I think you're going to see a greater demand for personnel in the school.
I wonder if it's self fulfilling, so we have two, is the workforce going to double?
You know, there's two arguments we had for the whole.
Would you change the verbiage on the second one? I mean, we're kind of, I don't say our hands are tied with what, what you guys inherited, but is there, what's the vision of our, of our resource officer down the road? Is he, is he in classrooms teaching or not?
We're working on that, yeah.
You know, there's got to be a change, just because everything's changing.
Right, right, I mean, we're trying to and we're.
The old DARE program, no disrespect, isn't what today's about, right? It's gone.
One of the hurdles we're having right now.
More towns are picking it back up again. They revamped the whole thing and now, Agwam, Agwam never gave it up. Ludlow's putting it back in their school system, you know, so.
Yeah.
That's right, but yes, Joe, do your answer, yes, whoever we pick for the next one will make sure it's very clear cut to them that it's not just eight to four. School resource officer should be involved in after-school programs. They should be doing field trip with these kids, almost the same philosophy that DARE officer used to be. It's more than just walking onto school for security, so for us.
You understand he's busy now, I get that, you know, like you said, it's threefold of what it used to be up there or any of our campus, but. Yeah, and that's not going to go away.
So I guess the question I would ask for education purposes is that, is that we want to do the grant, we want to fill it, hopefully you guys, you know, approve it, but if you approve it now and they award it, does it hurt our rating or our reputation with the federal government? If we then turn around and say, thank you, thank you very much, but we're not taking your money now?
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
They don't like that. They don't like that at all.
That's a gut feeling I had, Russ, so that's why, no, so.
And I don't think we would say no if we were approved, but your bigger picture is, what's going to happen in three years and how do we handle that?
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's, that's all, and that's why, you know, this, this wasn't in our package.
No, you got it, no, you got it.
So I think we should digest it.
Absolutely.
The grant just presented itself, that's kind of where we're at. Came out last month.
What's your deadline for application?
February eleventh.
March eleventh, yeah.
You can throw ten percent out, I can throw out a fake date to get them to hang up over here.
That didn't hurt nearly as much as ten percent.
March eleventh, you know, and actually Paul Miles, he's working, been working on it for three days now, you know, so I don't.
No, we're going to give you a decision.
No, no pressure, no, you guys, no, I do understand a hundred percent where you're coming from.
Yeah. I'm just.
Money only goes so far.
Devil's advocate.
You got it, no.
You know.
I think that's all that we have for national, right?
And good night and thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it. Long day for all of us, we appreciate it.
All right, I think it's a long day for the deputy chief, so why don't we go to old business because you're here.
Right, that's right.
If you got called away.
To table this green application?
For the next meeting.
Yeah.
And I did not bring with me.
We gave them all back because we didn't want to cut another tree down.
What do you need? You need the folder?
I thought we gave the packets back.
Do you need the folders? I'll get you a folder, what do you need?
The folders? The four individuals.
The folders. Oops, you want me to get them to you?
Nope, Doug has one and.
That's my, let me see, one, two.
We have, we have your.
All right.
There we go.
All right, you were called away to.
My apologies, I was unable to sit through the final interview and I'm not quite, you know, sure how Chris matched up with the rest, so. I'm assuming it went okay, if I didn't hear otherwise.
Yep. Let's see, we had Christopher Lombardi.
Yes.
I think he was the last one we interviewed. Jacob Sanborn. Josh Gerard. And Stephen Backman?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Now, when we first started this, you were looking for two people.
Yes.
But in the meantime, during this process, we've had an individual tender's resignation because of a job offer and a neighbor in family.
Yes, and he's already left the department.
Okay.
It has had an immediate impact on us already. The job that we're looking to do is that much harder. We've had to change other people's schedules to accommodate staffing the ambulances best we can with the paramedic level hours.
Yep.
But we also have a situation where, in a while, things will help. So Brian Schneider is on track to probably be a certified paramedic by June, and I would say that's the least.
Okay.
So that's going to help us an awful lot.
June of this year.
Yep, so he has started his clinicals, so he has his clinicals and then his examination, then he'll be done.
Okay.
I'm sorry, he's doing his ride time now, his clinicals are completed, he's doing his ride time and so once that's done, he'll test out. So June is a very good date and that's even a little conservative, I could say he could, might even be able to make that sooner if things worked out. So that's a plus for us. But when we look at how quickly things are already moving, we're already going to be in one year in four or five months.
Correct.
So that leaves us two years to meet the state requirement of, you know, paramedic level, ambulance twenty-four seven. We're also, because we're a new agency, under a restriction that says you need two paramedics. So we've been doing our best to accommodate that. While Zach was here, I had two paramedics working on one shift and I would work with Zach as the other shift and fill as many hours as we possibly could. So now he's left, I had to split the other two, so there's only three of us working there trying to do the work of four.
Sure.
And it has been, it's been okay, but it's a situation that unfortunately, if it goes on for a very long time, it's such a ticket's toll on everybody.
Everybody's going to burn out.
Right, so here's my recommendation, and of course, whatever the board recommends is what, we will find a way to make it work.
Right.
I would like for three people to be hired at this time.
Yep.
All right, and each one of them brings a different skill set. So if we were to adjust each one of them, Chris Lombardi is a paramedic currently with certification and with medical clearance. He would be able to up and run, be up and running with us as a paramedic very quickly. He still has a few requirements as far as the physical abilities test that he would have to pass his physical, but then he would also have to commit some time to doing firefighter one. So it's probably going to be the Fire Academy in Springfield because that's the direction we want to go, so that would take him.
That's still a couple of months.
It is, and would take him out of the rotation again, so we'd still have a little bit of a struggle. In the meantime, we didn't have a ton of applicants that are paramedics, we had people that are in school. And if you ask around, that's what we're getting for applicants, that's what everybody's getting for applicants. So we almost have to find a way to make that work, all right? Josh Gerard has, I would say, again, very conservatively, sixteen months before he was a paramedic, but Josh also brings a lot of other experiences, having been part of the department already, a proven basic and already firefighter one too, so he would need to go for that training. He gets his paramedic, he moves right into that position, his initial training would be done at that point. So in eighteen months, let's say, I could have two paramedic firefighters with just those two hires. Steve Backman also comes to the department with a whole different set of experiences because of his schooling. His degree in emergency management is certainly a bonus to the department. He's an excellent EMT, he does have firefighter experience and he would be probably the one that would, for the firefighter training, go towards the end. Jake Sanborn comes to us with some firefighting experience, is in school and I think academically, I think he has a challenge. And some of that is because of the program that he's attending. It's a remote program, it's online, he goes out east and he gets towards the end of his program, I think the call for him to go out east to do more of the practicals is starting to become a little overwhelming.
Right, the distance.
Right, so Jake would be kind of like the, like nine months out. It was the impression I got from the other meeting, he'd be about nine months out where he wrapped everything up. But I would hate to have somebody come onto the department and then not get certification. Because part of the hiring requirement would be that they need to maintain paramedic, that's part of the agreement with the CBA as well. That once they're a paramedic, they have to maintain that level. So he would have to become a paramedic within that timeframe. And in my honest opinion, I think he would, he could do it, but I know for a fact that Steven could do it and Josh can do it and Chris would come to us, sorry, he's a paramedic. So my recommendation right now would be to hire Chris Lombardi, Josh Gerard and Steve Backman.
But Steve will be done quicker than Josh?
Yes, he would. Yep.
And Steve would be the nighttime guy?
For the, yes, that's, that's part of what, right, so the other side to this that has to be discussed as well too is that part of moving forward is us bringing in more per diems. So we have two that have been a great help and very successful. They work great with everybody, they've worked in the field training officer role very successfully. We've gotten everybody where we need them to be. But now we want to start bringing in some other paramedics that are interested in working for Southwick Fire as a part-time per diem type of paramedic. And that would give us that additional nighttime coverage. And we've had some significant interest in that, I just haven't been able to pull the trigger on that yet because we've been dealing with some other things.
Sure.
Sure.
So that's part of what's also happening, so we're kind of bringing a good blend of people together that I think would give us a good solid effort. Because here's, the train analogy works great, we can rearrange the cars on the train as much as we want, but it still arrives at the station at the same time, it's a two-year timeframe, it gets there. If I delay and go another three months of hiring, posting, and bringing people in, because that's pretty much what we're running for a timeframe right now, by the time we advertise, get people interviewed and get them to this point, it's easily three to four months. I'm delaying that whole train again, and that starts now to, if they're a year out, people we bring in, that really sets getting close to our cutoff date with the state. So I want to be in a comfortable position with the state where we're running paramedics, but when we only have to run double paramedic, we bring somebody new on, but when I have experienced paramedics, I can pair them with a basic. So that allows me to have a little bit more flexibility at nighttime coverage and during the day, so that the shifts align differently. So while Carrie is still in school as a basic, she can work with a paramedic and we would be okay with that requirement. So we're about a year away from that hap, nah, six months away from that happening.
She's in training, too, right?
She's in training as well, too.
What's her timeframe?
She and Josh are in the same timeframe.
They're in the same class, right?
Exactly, so that's what I'm saying, at that two-year mark, when we are required to be full ALS, we're going to be there.
We're going to have a bunch of people graduating in time.
Right, and again, people we, that are from the community, people that have already made an impact within the department. And that to me, you know, speaks volumes for the people that have applied.
And the other thing we need to be concerned about is not losing people, we brought somebody in.
We can't get, we're going to lose them no matter what, we can't say this is.
But maybe the ones he's looking at now, we're going to retain them here long.
You don't know that.
One would help, one would help.
Let me get out in front of this, I think the, I call him, the kid with the interesting mustache, that was the last one, right?
That was Lombardi.
Lombardi, right, I mean, that, that one's easy, I think, right, I mean, if everything else checks out, that one's easy.
Yep.
Frankly, I'd stay on him to bring two of his friends, right, from AMR, they all hate it over there, they're all running ragged, why are we not, why are they not here?
Right.
Okay? My big concern is, I think Josh is going to make a great member of the Southwick Fire Department. But I, I can't place a bet on a guy that's a sophomore that far out from being done. And like you said, the train's going to arrive at the station, we got a spot for this kid, definitely when he gets, when he's.
If he was formed once away, I wouldn't have a problem with this conversation.
That, that's just my opinion, I, I can't, when we went through this process the last time, and we, we interviewed him and he's like, well, I'm starting next week. And we talked about, you know, what's the pass fail rate and all this other, and passing firefighter, so that's why, you know, Lombardi, okay, you got to go to firefighter school. But that's, okay, the, the pass fail rate's pretty good on that.
Yes.
That's a pretty safe bet. Passing medic school's not the same thing, and I'm concerned with any of it, there was one that was going to be done in May.
That would be, uh, Stephen.
Right.
Stephen, the nighttime kid.
Okay, he's done in May, so we can, we can see that from here, right?
Yes.
And, and you go, okay, but somebody's 18 months out, that's a big, that's a big deal. And I, like I said, I fully, I see him here, I just don't, I want to have him be a little closer, that's my, just Doug, one guy's opinion, I'd like to see, you know, and I, you know, and it, it pains me because I've been, I've been sweating this all week and even since he interviewed the first time. You know, we go to the, the association dinner, the guy's got the most hours, goes to the most calls, he's, and I don't want to dissuade him, right, and say, dude, you know, but at the same time, he becomes a full-time employee of the town of Southwick, and then what happens? If, if it doesn't all come to fruition, the way we all have this grand plan that it works out, what if it doesn't, now we're in a spot.
It's in the offer of employment.
I get it, but that's a real tough thing to say.
I just view, the way I viewed it is we're sort of trading him for Brian because Brian's coming out, so now he goes and, Brad, Brian was there.
But this is a big difference, because Brian, and Brian was already a full-time employee of the town of Southwick, was BLS, he has stepped up to the plate, and the town stepped up for Brian, right?
Because of the way we structured the contract.
Absolutely, and he's going to go and go, and he realized that the writing was on the wall, as far as this is the way our department's going, we would like you to come along, we love you, we want you to stay, career development, here you go. And then, and now Carrie's doing the same thing, so like, the, the train is getting a little longer, which is great, but those guys are already employees of the town of Southwick, and I hope and pray that they both finish, and Brian's, you know, near the, the finish line, but Carrie and, and Josh are in the same boat, in the same class. I, I would love to see.
But we're accommodating for the third one who left.
I get it, but I'm not going to go and just take, I, I, I'm, I'm, I got a real problem with it, I would love to see, uh, Chris go lasso two of his friends and get them in here and we can do this process a lot quicker, especially if they're medics. We can interview them, hire them, does not take away a spot for Josh at, when he gets out of school, because you got to be 24/7 ALS at that time, you're still going to be adding the guys. I'm not shutting this guy out, I'm not killing his career, I'm not doing anything that's going to jeopardize his future, and I, at the same time, I protect the town of Southwick, and you get medics on to the schedule and so you guys don't run yourself ragged. Because having him, it helps, but it doesn't help enough for where we are right now, and I think, you know, I, like, I'm putting a lot of thing on Chris to say, hey, go get me two more guys, right? But, and I don't know if that's humanly possible, but it seems to me with everything that I've heard and read about generally AMR and all the medic stuff going on around the cities right now, those guys, if the, the pay's decent and the job is good and you're not, you know, there are straight out adrenaline junkies, I get it.
Yes.
And we're not looking for that guy, or girl, but I think that that's the safer approach to get to where we want to be, that, just, that's my opinion.
I want to agree with you, I, and if we go that route, I think that Josh still stays in the pool, I don't think you throw them out, I think you go back out and look.
Right.
And do the thing, they're still there, they're not gone, and I also think that Josh and the other one fully realize when they became paramedic school that if an opening happened tomorrow, they weren't going to get that. Education, education, those kids know that, and Josh is dedicate, dedicated, and if we were three months away from him or four months away from him being done, I'd put him on tomorrow. I don't, there's nothing against Josh at all, but same thing, and I, and I, and I'm not trying to be the ass in the room, I fully understand. No, no, but I, I, I think mine and your opinion was, hey, we're going paramedic, they're going to line up, we're all set. Reality is, things have changed in the last year or two in this world where they've got plenty of places to go. Southwick isn't the place, we're going to be sitting down with the unions, I completely understand our pay scale, maybe not exactly where it should be with these guys, paramedics coming in, we're learning that the hard way, I get it, I'm not trying to compare them to police. I get it, so we have to look at that to retain these guys, because that's a whole nother problem that we're going to present us in the next few weeks, that, yeah, there's guys out there, Joe, but your pay, you're just not where you need to be to retain them.
Okay.
So I'm fine with the nighttime guy and the other kid during the day, I'm fine with keeping Josh in the pool, I, but same as him, I thought, I honestly thought we'd be so much further ahead, but they're not out there, the paramedics, or at least they're not knocking down our doors. And I don't know where that's going to go, and I guess we're going three more months, when you come back and smile and say.
It's a function of everything right now, it's a function of this business, it's, and frankly, on a, on a macro level, it's a function of the economy, everyone who's working right now is working. And everyone who's, you know, frankly, if you're not working right now.
Yeah, it's deep.
You get bigger issues, right?
Yeah.
Unemployment rate has never been this low in a long time, and so it's creating pressure on wages, I get that, but, you know, then you read about AMR, for example, and all the strife and trouble they're having and what they're not paying over there, I can't believe more people aren't just running out of there in droves. And apparently they are, because of what they say they're working, uh, you know, Chris, you know, the hours he was working and the turnaround and all the other stuff. It seems like that would be an opportunity for a department like ours to, to recruit people, but.
But do they want to be firemen, and I want to talk with him.
Well, I get it, and that's the thing.
It's a whole nother world, and I'm thinking it's not that simple, but he's like, oh, no, no, do you want to be a fireman?
But you know what, I guess, and maybe that's the other question to look at, too, is as you go ALS 24/7, maybe, maybe the, and I don't, I don't want to open this whole canola.
I already did.
Maybe the whole fire department doesn't need to scale, but the medic side does, right, so you don't absolutely have to be a firefighter to be a medic in the town of South, I don't know, that's not my thing, this is you guys to decide, right, and come back to us. I know we've always had that, you know, the, the BLS guys are firefighters.
Apparently they all do, news to me, right?
But it is, and, and that's the industry standard, the expectation is that they do both, crossover rule, and it's, the expectation is that they will do that.
And that was one of the things we sold, I shouldn't say sold, but brought to the voters at the town meeting, that this was also going to give added fire protection.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and so then, then that's, then it is what it is, right? But, but when you look at the runs, and it, but at the end of the day, really, when you look at the runs.
It's all ambulance.
It's all ambulance.
It is, it is, but again, you, you hate to downplay that one fire call.
No, 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 not at all, but I'm just saying, right, when you get to 20, you know, how, what is, what is 24/7 ALS look like as a head count?
How many?
To make it work, the minimum?
Yep.
Would be eight.
See, there you go, so there's plenty of openings.
No, my point is, is, and how many full-time, we've never had more than.
But, right, never had, what we do.
When I first, there was two full-time firefighters in the town of Southwick, right? And then, and then we've grown, we've stepped up as we've added, I don't, I just.
And there are a lot of scheduling models that the chief and I have looked at, and we can't just say, this is the one we want. So, and, and a lot of that is dictated by what do we have for personnel coming in?
Sure, sure, sure.
What are we really looking at for our busy times, because our busiest times is, say, 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. So that really should be the block that we're covering, and it would be ideal to have enough staff during the day to cover that second ambulance call, because that's when it occurs, and even if at night, it was a mix of full-time and, um, per diems. Which the union has agreed to, which out here in this part of the state, they have to, because we don't have that big pool of candidates to choose from. And so our, our, our whole dynamic, our paradigm is a little different than some of the other departments, but we make it work. That's why you bring people in at certain times, to me, it's, it's still doable, and I, I do understand your concern about the town having a liability with somebody that's a year or further out, not being able to make, you know, to be successful at what they want to do, and then what? And then, because that kind of puts us right back to where we are today. So I, I guess I'm just looking for a final recommendation, I'd like to notify the guys and let them know where we stand.
So where, so where are we with, so, and Mr., I'm sorry, because it's been a week, I barely remember what I had for lunch today, Mr. Sanborn.
Jake Sanborn.
He is also Fall 2020.
He's the East guy, right, that we.
Correct.
You walked out when we were discussing him.
Living in Chester, um, Westfield, um, working in a small ambulance service in the Hill towns.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But taking a, a challenging paramedic program, it's an online program, um, as it gets later in the program, he's traveling out east more to do, Westbridge Water, to do academic for, for testing and for practicals and things of that nature. And, and I just get the feeling that he's having a hard time with the program. It's not an easy program to pass, it's really geared towards very disciplined adult learners, that type of thing, it's what it's designed for, he's, he's a young man, he seems very dedicated and devoted to it, but I, I, I think he's struggling. And if we were to be concerned about one person not being able to accomplish paramedic, I think that's a, a fair statement that the other was, would fall into that same concern, so.
I'm going to play devil's advocate here just for a minute, you know, because we've had different qualified people come before us, you know, one of them just left, you know, and I, I look at this group and, and in the interview process, and out of this group, I think there's two here that I think want to be in the town of Southwick, are going to stay in the town of Southwick, no matter what job opportunities are out there, and I'm even talking, okay. And, and I, I think Josh is one of them, and I think, uh, Stephen is the other one. That was my gut feeling, nothing against Chris, I think Chris says that, but I, but I think that he's at an age where he could change and go somewhere else, because I think he would be highly sought after.
Yes.
Because of his experience and stuff like that.
And I agree, and so this can, you know, it's been a conundrum for me as well all week.
Right, and so I, I, I'm, I, I hear what you and Doug are saying, but in the same token, that guy there isn't going to leave the town of Southwick.
No, and, and I don't expect him to.
Isn't going to leave the town of Southwick, and I don't have any doubt that he's going to become a, a, a paramedic from what I'm told, he's, he's excellent at the details of, of that aspect. So I was just saying, I, no, I was just saying that this gentleman and this gentleman both want to be in the town of Southwick, they're here for life. I, I think Chris obviously is the, the most qualified candidate, and I certainly would support hiring him, but I don't, just like some of the other people we've lost, you know, in police and fire and things like that, I, I can see that. The potential is there of, of him moving on or, or anybody moving on, but, so that's, that would be my only point. If, if I had to make a decision tonight, I would be voting to accept the deputy chief's recommendation.
Which is, sorry?
To, it would be Chris Lombardi, Josh Gerard, and Steve Backman. Would be my recommendation.
You still say we take two and then leave Josh in the pool and just one more three-month interval, and if, and if you come back with nothing, I get it, and we'll make a hard decision, but that's just, that's me.
Backman's in his clinical right now?
Correct.
That's my notes.
Yes.
Can't read my own notes.
Right, so he could do nights, once he's, once he's done, he could do nights, he's still in college.
But he, he wants to be in Southwick, Massachusetts, there's any doubt about it.
Oh, no doubt, yeah.
No doubt. He made the commitment.
And Josh was in his clinicals, I don't even think he'd be having a discussion.
He's, he's working for us now, right?
Yes, yes.
And he was the one where he needed a commitment, other than that, he's.
Yeah.
He'd have to, he'd be forced to move on.
Right.
So, so I can see him, a career here in Southwick and.
I, I agree, I agree, and he's, he's so close to the end, I just.
Yeah.
I'm torn here, I love Josh, I think he's a great kid, I think he's going to be great, I just, I just want to get him a little further along before I, I put that stake in the ground.
Okay.
That's my recommendation to you.
I'd leave him in the pool, though, I wouldn't get, I wouldn't say.
I mean, absolutely, he's a, he's a candidate, and he's a strong candidate, and he, if he puts, put that degree on the resume, this is done, I would have hired him in a minute.
If he was in his clinicals.
If he was here with this guy, I'd do the same exact thing, absolutely, no doubt, no doubt. And then, and I, and I respect your opinion on, on this gentleman, I, you know, I, I kind of saw that a little bit, but not as, you know, you've, you've had more interaction with him, so again, I'd like to, you know, let's see the result for this guy again, and when he's further along in his program and his progress to it.
Okay, we're not going to beat a dead horse, I think, uh, we're going to.
Do you need a motion?
A motion for those two.
Individuals or en masse?
Yeah, both individuals.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the job offer to Stephen Backman.
Pending all necessary.
Pending yada, yada, yada.
Yada, 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 second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make another motion to extend an offer of employment, yada, yada, to Christopher Lombardi.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you took two and you're going to leave the other two in the pool?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
And repost or whatever we need to do to repost and see what's out there.
Well, you don't have to repost, right, it's an open, it's an open, it's open till filled, right?
Yeah, but he'll still have to advertise it, because you got to get people, they need to know.
It has to go back out and re-advertise it, we've already started to corral some of those people in, because we have others, Clark Robinson, our latest hire.
Another one, too.
With AMR, and he knows a lot of players there, too.
How's he working out?
Very good.
He seemed like a crackerjack.
Yep.
And he was in the, well, he was about to take his last test a week before we hired him, right?
Also a Springfield College grad, so we have that going for us. So just, I want to make sure I understand it, because I need to explain to Josh and to, to Jacob, that for a hiring process, that they would not need to apply again, they're automatically in the pool, we take in candidates, they would come before the select board again with an update as to their progress?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, applications are staying on file and they update them in, in three months or whatever it takes for the process.
They'd have to send us a letter to withdraw it.
Right.
Okay.
If they want to be out.
That's my opinion, I mean, because I, I mean, I'm putting a stake in the ground, like, I think that he's going to be a great paramedic. Just become a paramedic.
Okay.
And then, and then we can, we can go from there.
Okay. Fair enough, I will notify the candidates where we stand, and I thank everybody for their time.
We thank you.
We'll do the letters.
And congratulations to you again.
All right, well, thank you very much, and everybody have a wonderful evening.
All right.
I appreciate you moving me up the plateau. I'm going to see my eyes in about two days.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay.
I'm going to send these down, back down now.
All right.
Where do you want to send them?
I'll send you, yeah. Yeah, I was going to send them to send.
Yeah, and I left mine at home, so I'll have to turn them in. Okay, we are back on the action item, 1A.
1A.
Michelle Hill.
1A?
Is concerning early voting, election update.
Yeah, just an update for you to see what, what the schedule is and, um, how there's going to be extra hours and there's going to be more people coming through the building, and of course, you know, we know at some point there will either be overtime or other part-time expenses coming.
Right.
As well as possible state aid.
Right.
So that is being tracked, too.
Okay, but at some point, probably, because we do have the extra election, right, to fill in for the senator, um, there might be a request of the finance committee, possibly.
Oh, sure, if you need it.
Okay, so that's FYI, everybody okay with that?
FYI.
Moving right along, uh, 2A is a letter for the Mass State Lottery Commission, that Sunny's Convenience Store, 801 College Highway, uh, wants to do Keno. Any objection, we'd have to file something in writing, is there any objection at this time?
None.
I hope he gets it done quicker than he put the bill.
There you go, okay.
I was going to say, if he goes about that pace, we don't have to worry about the Keno either.
This, I don't know, this is, oh, we've gone over some, this is 8A.
Three?
Hold on, three.
That's interesting.
6A, 7A.
Five.
6, 7, 8?
6, 7, and 8.
Okay, this is the agricultural commission, we have people that are, are re, uh, retiring, resigning, and people that.
Chair mail has more.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for him to pronounce this name.
Lauren. Lauren Kandziriski.
Kenzariski?
Kandziriski.
That was worth the price of admission, right there.
Kenzariski.
Kandziriski. Good Irish name. Anyways, uh, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Lauren and Brett Mitchell. From the agricultural commission.
Uh, for.
Resignation.
Lauren, sure. Seven?
Brett.
No, because those came in today. I gave you a whole new package. And I emailed it too.
Okay.
Wow. Don't move.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we have some new people that wanna go on?
Yeah. How many spots do we have, though?
Seven regular members and five alternate members exist presently.
And you have room for them all, from what Dennis said. Turn the page. I believe I wrote it there.
Okay. So we have room.
Look down bottom.
Okay. All previously pointed for one year. The commission consists of seven. Uh, four shall be involved. Okay.
So there's room for all of these?
Yep.
Well, the rest would be alternates, Joe.
Okay. So, with that.
Go through and point them to each, where we want them? So, right, so who do we want for members and who do we want for alternates?
Yeah, cause you have two lead.
Okay, so we had, we could be two members.
He and Mitchell are the ones that actually left.
Okay.
Right, Cindy? Was there another one that was a?
No, it's, it's right on the front page.
Right.
On the packet I gave you.
So.
I gave you another one tonight, too. It's right there. I can see it, right under that big book you got.
Right.
This big book?
Yeah.
Okay. That's why.
Okay. Lauren. Brett.
Three, four, so five people wanna come on.
Right.
So you could just, you could, out of the.
Okay, Zach.
Take two as regular members.
That's what I was getting at, right.
Logie Lane does not mention any agricultural experience. Tammy, um, is, has a fa- a small farming business.
Yeah. I would recommend Tammy and Ron.
And Ron Chikini.
Ronnie just changes all over.
Oh, Tree Farm?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the old ski lodge.
I'll second his motion.
So Tammy and Ron are the regular members.
Yep.
Yep.
Full regular.
And the others are so- for associates?
I guess, yeah.
Mr. Mog- um, Mr. Dee Dee made the motion. Mr. Moguln seconded. All in.
Favor.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Yeah.
There you go. You figure it out. Okay. 10A, uh, from Randy Brown. This is a follow-up, uh, to the letter dated, um, uh, Sal Place. Due to Jack, Mr. Richard Gerard, no, he's withdrawing his, uh, name for consideration. So Randy has recommended Gary Turcot. Is Mr. Turcot on Curtis Road?
It is Mr. Turcot on Curtis Road.
I think he works at Crestview.
I've had long discussions with that gentleman, and, um, if, in the, in the eyes of Russ Fox, if he can take that transportation and make it half as nice as his property.
We have a winner.
We have a winner.
Second.
Motion? Motion?
That is an offer of.
Paying pen, pending.
Yada, yada, yada.
And he is the net person in the musical chair process, so it still is temporary.
Yes.
All right, you accept that in your motion?
But he's not, he's still gonna get full benefits, cause he's gonna be here forever.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. And he's got licenses to use the suck van, everything.
He can run the suck truck and everything?
He can run the suck truck and everything.
All right.
And it lives in Southwood.
11A, motion to authorize award to highest bidder for each item accepted in descending order. Motion to, uh, surplus items no bid received, including scrap metal value. Motion authorized the CAO to execute any all titles, bills, and sales to carry out. This is for the obsolete equipment.
Right, you'll see, there was, there was no bids on two of them, so I'll have to scrap them all then.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept the high bids on all the items. And, and, very good. Shelburne Falls, the fire truck for $20,000 is a.
How can they still use it, though? I just, I, I'm floored. I, I, it's wonderful, but how does that really work, right?
Look at the guy from, there's a guy that is on our department from the hill town, and he also is a volunteer up there. And they have something, and I swear, there's still places to hook the horses to it.
Right.
Right, you use it.
It's all relative, Joe. It's all relative.
No, I get it.
But it has to do with your ratings too.
So those are the three votes I need to start.
All right, the first vote is to accept the highest bidder.
Yeah, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, you also do it in descending order in case the highest bidder went through.
All right. As, the motion to authorize awards, the highest bidder for each item accepted in descending order. That was the motion made by Mr. Moguln. Mr. Dee Dee seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion to surplus items for which no bids received, including scrap metal value.
Yep.
Sure.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Motion to authorize the CAO, that would be Mr. Steinhardt. To execute any and all titles and bills of sales to carry out all these awarded votes.
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now.
No one wanted the Mercedes?
Somebody tried to hide.
That's too bad. That was a nice car.
That's a nice car.
Okay, that's 11A, but 12A was hidden underneath.
Could I park that like a sign?
Is this part of it?
11A goes with this, that's 12A.
Okay, I got it.
You add it to 11A.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh, this is, uh, from the Department of Wildlife Protection. A Western Region Office in Springfield, Massachusetts. Disaster debris management. They're looking for us to come up with a plan in case we get another storm like in October.
Locations where you would put things.
Right, October.
So it's been referred to the DPW Director and the Board of Health, and they're coming forward with a recommendation.
Absolutely. And tell them sometime, um, you know, you know, summer would be good. Uh, chair mail. Uh, application for one.
After July 1st, Joe.
After July 1st. Uh, application for a one-day liquor license. Uh, this is from the Southwood Recreation Center. Uh, this is for the Lions Club Sadie Hawkins Dance, which will take place on, get this, February 29th, 2020, cause it's a leap year.
Sadie Hawkins.
From 5:30 PM to 11:30 PM. Uh, this is, uh, all alcohol beer and wine, uh, 64 powder mill.
Waving of the police officer?
Waving of the police officer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
You have a whole packet there. See that sticky thing to sign?
Yeah, police have signed, uh.
Yeah, everybody, oh, yeah.
So it'll be signed to the first page and the tabbed page.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, one abstention.
Wonderful.
Okay. So.
Sign the front page to approve it.
Uh, well, I'm not gonna sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much anywhere?
Yeah.
I am clerk of the work. I'll sign it there, Mr. Moguln.
Oh, that goes with it too. Okay.
I like that.
The tab.
All right. So that thing looks like the Declaration of Independence.
Well, cause we have to ask for Board of Health.
I got no blood on it, yeah.
Fire sign off on these.
Yep. I educated Board of Health today on how that works. No, just as far as, cause she didn't know, cause she has to come do an inspection and explain to her that, you know, the rec centers.
Cindy did too.
I did too. And also.
So.
Art Waller was questioning if he had to inspect these again, if they have a certificate of occupancy.
Cause they're not portable tents.
Right.
Right.
They're already done.
No, they get inspected once a year, like in June.
Right, but they already have their normal occupancy permits, as opposed to like a temporary structure, like a tent or something.
But the one-day throws that little monkey wrench into it for him, like, well, it's one day. What is it? But yeah.
If it's in the same facility.
Same facility.
But if it's a, what if there's a band? That's what triggers it, isn't it?
I thought a tent triggers it.
The fire permit.
The band, if it's a good band, might.
For him, it's the structure for the fire. Yeah, okay. So.
All right, why don't we let the CAO work with the building department and the fire department and police department and review that, and let them come up with a recommendation to this board? All right, uh, next thing from chair mail is a letter from Superintendent Jennifer Willard.
How's she doing?
Uh, she's doing fine. She's inviting us to a public hearing on their budget Tuesday, February 25th at 6:30 PM. And I believe that.
We meet.
We meet.
We have a dance that night.
Yeah. So, gentlemen.
We're gonna have to adjourn to their meeting.
Do you wanna move your meeting? You wanna start early so you can attend that?
Ooh, early's a bad word.
If, if we started at 5:30, how, do we already have anything posted or any hearings or anything like that?
Well, you, you might after you're done with the other parts of your agenda and our whole business.
That is correct. That is correct.
With your dog here.
Well, just be cognizant of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Definitely be cognizant of that.
Oof.
Yeah, that's.
That'll have to be another night, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we gotta, we gotta reach out.
At the 18th.
There's a lot involved with that, Russ. That may not happen as quickly as, uh, we may think. So we might make the school thing this time.
Well, uh, here's our, a couple options. One, we have a.
You do that another night, that's all.
Meet another night.
Well, no, you, you do that hearing, another board schedule.
Okay, that's one possibility. One, another possibility, since we had to move a couple of meetings already. Because of elections.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Cause you won't have your conference room. This room? Oh, it's being taken over.
Yeah.
Because of elections. So we had to meet, we had to move meetings to Monday instead of Tuesday.
Well, these are ballots will be counted that night, cause we spend money on our election equipment.
That is correct.
And we will be all set.
All right. So, so we can either move this meeting to another night, or we can have an abbreviated, uh, meeting and postpone any possible hearings.
Well, we just work them either the week before. You, that's, this is two weeks, three weeks from now, so.
Oh, yeah.
You've got a meeting the 18th?
Oh, yeah.
No, we don't.
Yeah, we do.
It's a national.
Oh, we do.
The 18th.
The 18th, that's right.
Not the 11th.
Okay.
So you have a meeting the 18th.
Okay. I apologize.
Meet the 25th, and we just meet with them on the 25th.
Yeah.
Uh, you'll still want something.
Okay, why don't we, all right, here we go.
He would have the shakes.
Boy, I think we've beaten us to death, Russ.
We will have a meeting at 5:30, no hearings, and we'll add nice, short, light agenda. How's that?
6:30 to the school.
Right. Is that agreeable to everybody?
If you can't make it, we understand.
Okay. Next thing, um.
Things are gonna change on someone else's chair. I'll tell you that right now.
Lawrence?
I mean.
We're gonna be starting mid.
Oh, this is the.
That's the time we're gonna start.
This is, uh.
Monthly.
Executed.
Just the resignation of one of our reserve officers.
Right, you already did that.
That's Drakenberger, right?
Okay. All right, and we all.
A lot of resignations under your leadership, Russ. I don't know what's going on.
People are leaving left and right.
They're bailing off the ship, I tell ya.
Next is.
I think it's because I try to get the most out of people.
I don't know.
That's probably.
It must be.
The weaker ones fall by the wayside.
That's what it is, yeah.
All right.
So you tabled the community policing grant.
Community policing grant. Okay. Uh, this must be part of that grant application. Okay. All right, then we have the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Secretary of the Commonwealth. Presidential primary. So we have.
Ian State.
Okay.
You have five to seven warrants you need to sign for both elections.
All right. Does anyone need me to read these? Or can you just accept them as a presidential primary, a special state, uh, primary? Everybody comfortable with that?
Russ will follow you into war, not to worry.
Okay.
My God.
All right.
We're going to Suffield after this meeting.
We're going to Suffield.
All right. Did you steal my pen?
Don't use it. Use it, I touched it, so don't use it.
Is it?
No, I used that one too, don't touch.
Stop!
Don't touch my pen.
We gotta meet next week. I can't go without this comedy.
And I had a good day today, too.
What do they say every day above the grass, right?
Yeah, literally.
What's today?
Uh, today is the.
Fourth.
Fourth?
February 4th. 2020.
2020, the class of 2020.
How many?
Seven.
You wanna give me a quick motion on this side, please?
Yeah. Doug made the motion.
I second it, as said.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
Press any updates on, uh, who won out there? Are they still counting the Chad ballots? Nothing said, yeah, I just checking.
How could you do that when you.
Of what?
Well, because she got her, ladies and gentlemen, I didn't know if something came through her phone saying.
For what?
Protesters at the school.
Oh, they were out there when I came?
Yeah.
It was dark. It was dark, and they're holding a sign I couldn't read. I didn't know what it was. I thought they were selling Girl Scout.
I was gonna wash my truck, but it didn't.
Now you have a breakdown of what's in the application.
I used all those car washing, I had two bucks, I was like, no one washes.
Make them.
They're getting.
Yeah, I already made the paper. Half a page.
You interviewed the dog?
What did he have to say?
Yeah.
A different dog.
You can speak tongue?
Uno, the dog from Westfield who was on the dog bullet.
I saw that.
I saw that today.
That's awesome.
He was a very sweet dog.
That's like my Mavvy. Mavvy's a rescue dog from Texas, my dog too.
And he's got the same-
Would you like to interview his dog?
The Super Dog Bowl.
The same, it would be true. We never knew to enter.
I resigned him, I can touch him.
Yeah.
Well, then you had a debate.
Yeah.
That's okay, I don't-
He said seven, but there's gotta be at least twenty-seven. I, they just keep coming.
Make sure we didn't raise somebody's pay right in here, right?
I, I, I hope you're double checking.
I'm not checking, I'm just writing a tape.
I think Russ resigned to one of these, I'm sorry.
I, I saw, I saw something from Putin on one of them.
And I think you're getting back Mogul from your old days.
Putin and, and some from Iowa. I don't know, I'm so confused.
I'm just being, doubt my ability to spell February.
You just certified the Iowa caucus results from-
Good Lord.
Somebody didn't have to do it.
I'm not qualified, I didn't work for Hillary Clinton.
Yeah, but you understand computers.
Cindy, you'll, you'll have to let Jess know when you bring these over to look just, just how bad you have to be. Actually, I'm gonna, I'll have to look them all over.
The constable's gotta post these yet. I hope we don't pay per sheet these are.
It's, it's just like a regular warrant for your town meeting.
All right, so.
Only warrant I want.
As Mr. Didi's signing that, I'm gonna continue, uh, the select board's schedule.
That's just an FYI, which you changed it again tonight.
We already changed it tonight, okay.
But that's, that's to reflect, the chair had changed it because of a election, uh, conflict.
Okay, and so we have to change two to Mondays because of, okay.
In the end of February.
All right, now we're going to, what the hell?
Old.
Old business. All right, the first thing under old business is the, uh, uh, dog hearing that we held, uh, but we did get a letter from the, um, dog officer, um, Ms. Bennett, uh, to the select board. I'm requesting to be able to present further information that has come to light regarding the dangerous dog hearing, presently under your consideration. I do feel that it will help with your decision regarding this, uh, again, from the animal control.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, what that relates to is we did check with the town attorney and he said basically because this new information that the animal control officer would like to introduce to the board, uh, that was not known at the previous dog hearing, um, you can't vote to open, reopen the dog hearing like you can with land use boards.
You can't motion reconsider that?
No, you can't. So, so you're gonna have to mark it up again for a, uh, another full hearing with all the parties and then add this other information and get the parties to stipulate on the other information that was already recorded in the proceedings.
All right, let's set it up.
So.
I'll let you work out with the animal control officer and anyone else that would need to testify the scheduling.
Okay, because obviously we know it's not gonna be the night you're gonna be having a brief meeting.
Right.
So it's either going to be here or it's going to be here.
All right.
Okay.
Do you have to notice it again?
Oh, yeah, we'll do it.
Do you have enough, oh, you have enough time now, today's only the fourth.
Oh, these aren't leaked, so these, that's not the same kind of noticing requirements, but, yeah, we'll be able to do it.
You don't have to post it in here, you don't have to post it.
Look, we got here, look, plenty of time.
Okay. And I, I think that the board agrees that we'd like to see this thing expedited as much as possible.
Right, but it's gonna be commensurate with your schedule.
Correct. All right, next thing up is, uh, the WIC three-three-eight schedule. Uh, I think everyone has reviewed it. Uh, I had a chance, I was, uh, met with, uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, last week, had a conversation with him, uh, so. Everybody's, I haven't heard any-
I haven't heard from the rec center. I know they have it, they possess the-
No, they didn't, the rec center told me that, uh, they didn't see any issue.
Okay.
Two-fifty, I don't think had any issue.
And then the rest of the issue relating to police and fire really speaks to the issue of the permit. And the permit requires the applicant or the permit holder to do everything that the police and fire chiefs-
Ask every year, right.
I asked them.
Right.
So they're gonna get what they want anyway, in the permit language.
Okay, and Mr. Johnson would have been here tonight, but he had, uh, had some surgery, so he couldn't, couldn't attend.
So, what's your, what's your action on this?
I would, I think, uh, motion that, uh, we don't have any problem with the schedule.
Motion to accept the schedule.
Second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, I do do some work there for the nationals, so.
Okay, all right, uh, next thing is from the planning board, it's the Revere, Revere Road, uh, that we, uh, letter that we, uh, sent them. And they are looking for additional information, uh, from town boards and town councils to satisfy the documentation that they need. You're the expert, uh, Mr. Mogul. Um, are, are there anything that we would need to, need funding for?
I don't think so. We took other roads that were further along.
It looks like Randy has submitted quite a bit of information.
Yeah, Randy's thing is attached to the planning board.
Okay. So, so we can submit this, has it already been submitted or?
Was this a warrant, are they requesting us to send it? We have, I have sent it back to them for a public hearing.
Okay, so here's the information and, uh-
Was that the request?
Uh, planning board requires more information prior to recommendation, input from police, uh, D P W, Police Department, Fire Department, uh, compliance, legal.
So it looks like Randy's given his stuff, but the other departments have-
Okay.
So, so basically that's us, sale and us to kick the other boards out.
Okay, so we need to send something to the Police Department, Fire Department, uh, to ask them to submit something in writing to the planning board. And once we have that, submit all that documentation to the town planner and, and, and have them take the necessary stuff.
And I don't think it's gonna be that relevant from those departments. We took Robin Road, for God's sake.
Right, right.
All right, I'll make sure that the planning board stuff and Randy's stuff goes to those departments and they get back to Al.
Correct, cause then they gotta come back to us to send it back to them to hold a public hearing, to get it on the town meeting warrant. And they got plenty of time to do it.
Okay, the only other thing listed under old business is the alentreatment and that's going out to bid?
That is already all, all out to bid.
Okay.
It's all advertised, the, um, R F Ps have been released. Um, the opening will be, uh, two o'clock on this, on the twenty-fifth. So, and the C P C is meeting on the twenty-sixth to go over the results.
Okay, good.
So what you need to do is to firm up whether you're gonna be having the town meeting on the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth. Because remember the moderator?
Right.
And so, so we just need to, I don't know if you wanna make that decision tonight or if you wanna wait until your next meeting.
Next meeting. There was, there, there was some discussion, I saw some emails fly by around, you know, never letting a good crisis go to waste, and suddenly that, that the six hundred thousand may not be enough.
Well, that is because Fishers and Wildlife came in and did new bathroom metric maps.
Could you say that word again?
No.
Thank you.
Bathroom. So they came in and did some new mapping, so Dr. Wagner, you know, had to incorporate that, so, but it's, it's bid with a range of six to eight. And the chairman of the C P C and Conservation Commission, all the other members know what that is. And we'll have, um, borrowing models to reflect those other dollar amounts.
So the C P C may have to convene another meeting to vote on an additional-
Why would they need to? They haven't voted on it yet and they're meeting the day after the bids are-
They voted on the, we were at the meeting that they voted on for six hundred thousand dollars.
Right, but, but then we said we were gonna put it out and they were gonna agree, they were going to get together again.
Right.
And they are, they're meeting the twenty-sixth.
Gotcha.
To examine what the actual bids come.
Okay.
All right.
Then they add on all the other numbers like the incidentals and, and I already talked to the chairperson of the committee about all the other issues and how you, the select board, under its prerogative, will determine the length of the note.
All right, and Mr. Mogul, and it made the suggestion, we hold off on setting the special town meeting date to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll carry forward, we'll carry forward on the, uh-
There you go.
It's not gonna change anything.
All right, any other old business?
Um, were you, were you going to, on the fire station project, you've got the FinComs input and the chief's input and the building inspectors' input, but you haven't made a decision as a board. Do you wanna do that now or wait two weeks?
Nope, let's do it now.
Are we gonna do a road trip? No, all right.
I, I, I.
We got that Mercedes that I won't bid on.
Now, uh, no, I just wanted to point out what had happened in the past. But people feel comfortable with it, the consultants feel comfortable with it.
There is one thing we will do. When we're done with this part, I will bring you upstairs to the roof and you can see the old roof. Now, the old roof had a coating with that granular stuff, and then it had all that insulation, which is what leaked and retained water. This other roofing system that you're contemplating now, isn't that type of roofing system. It's only this thick and it's just PVC.
I underst-
So it's not the same roof.
Russ, don't fall for that, I'm gonna take you up to the roof trick.
Look.
Well, and-
What I'm, all I'm saying, all I'm saying, you have a specialty product.
Right.
Only certain people can work on it.
Right.
If there's a tear, if the wind raises it up somehow, if it deteriorates, if there's a bad spot, for certain people can work on. That's all I'm saying. It might be the best thing since sliced bread, I don't know. All I wanted to do is convey the-
Resources to repair it later.
Right, right.
Correct.
Really.
Correct.
The type of a commercial vendor.
Right.
Right. So, as long as everybody understands that.
Well, in twenty-five years, we will not be sitting here.
If, if it lasts.
Doug will still be here.
Maybe Doug. But I know I'll be dead.
I will too. I'll be, I'll be there with you too.
I'm not gonna get twenty-five out of this deal. I'm, I'm okay with, uh, with that, with that material, I think it's interesting. And I also look at debris, and that thing is so high up, I just can't see where debris would hit it, other than a tornado or, or, you know, I guess, I guess we're gonna have to maintain making sure that we keep an eye on drainage, you know, because these drains have been backed up for years and if it wasn't for-
But the drains are.
Carl, no, no, if it wasn't for Carl stepping up and saying, hey, you know, we really gotta look at this, it, we'd still have this issue for another five years.
All our buildings, that's why I did this, I said, let's look at all our buildings.
Retiring in ten and it's your parting gift, I get it. That's all good.
Ten, boy.
But, you know, so we, we never saw up there, nor would we, and it's so high, you can't see it, the fire guys can't see it unless we're playing around with a ladder truck.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, we have a ladder truck, apparently we didn't go high enough to look at our, our roof for the last twenty years.
I think you-
Well, they did in the dark on Monday nights and they never saw.
Part of the, it came up during the meeting again, I think we should just, as part of the bid package, is that the installer has to post a surety.
Yeah.
Of, you know, equal to the cost of the, you know, call it a million bucks, call it five hundred thousand, they have to post that surety and it's a twenty-year bond.
Yeah.
Right, and at the end of the twenty years, they get it back. They don't have to put up half a million, they can, there's a surety instrument they can buy. Right, it's, it's fairly inexpensive and it, and it's in, name the town, just like a subdivision bond.
Right.
Right? If this thing doesn't last for at least three-quarters of the warranty, you call the bond.
Right.
They can't not go for it.
Right.
Or they can't do the project.
Yeah.
All right, so we're going to tell our consultants that the decision is for the-
You decide, Mr. Procurement Officer, what you think. If it's, you think it's a twenty-year roof? What, it's a thirty-year roof, right?
Oh, yeah.
We better get twenty years out of a twenty-year roof.
Yeah, before the starries come.
You know, again, you got the lowest bidder, uh-
But do we have to take the lowest bidder? Because you know what I mean?
Look at every single, every single government, this is not just out.
The law is the same.
Gotcha.
Look at every governmental project. They're either over budget or crapily built, or both.
It, it just sucks.
Uh, it is, but it's a fact. So you, you, the best you can do is maneuver.
Right.
Don't, you know what I mean? She's gonna quote me badly. But you know what I mean, it's just-
Tuck and roll, tuck and roll.
Every one of them, right.
You mean a ton.
All right, and I'm gonna make a suggestion, have the fire department pick the color.
They already did, they want the black gray.
Good, done.
Okay, so is there a vote, which one you've gone with?
So moved.
So moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye. The membrane roof and the, and the chief, I believe, I, I swear, I read it tonight, he wants the gray.
Membrane roof?
Dark gray.
Yeah, no, I, I think he-
To match the world's famous class.
You read it too, okay.
But make sure that our consultants know that we want some sort of guard system to slow down the snow.
The, the, the snow deal, the gutters.
Whatever the proper name, term name is, I don't know what the proper name is.
Right. They want gray to match the world's famous class.
And, and I will, what I'll do is, as they finalize the specs.
Cause they're all graying.
Yeah.
Gentlemen?
Yeah.
I do wanna have town council review the bidding documents and the specs to reflect the wishes of the board.
Yes.
That would be your wish to honor our wish.
Are you, does that reflect what?
Yeah, that was the motion, I think I heard me say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
It's like Roundhouse Day.
I know it. Uh, okay. Old business, any other old business, going once, going twice? Okay, we're on to-
Never know, I may have some.